Okay. Melissa, can you put the, oh, sorry. I'm not sure why the agenda is so little on my screen. There you go. Thank you so much. So we're gonna do a roll call and move forward with it. Jared Stoffes? Valerie Woodrow?
I'm here.
Danielle Carter?
Here.
Luke Cheswick? All right, Luke is not here yet. He's gonna be joining us soon. Jared, can you go ahead and do reveal the agenda for us? Can you read through it, please? As past Vice Mayor?
Absolutely. Agenda of the work session, the mayor and city council, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland. Virtual work session Tuesday, June 20th, 7:00 PM. Items for discussion, number one, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, presentation and discussion on the intersection of 31st and Perry Street project. Number four, presentation discussion on wayfinder signs and use source construction. Number five, presentation discussion on third quarter financial report. Number six, discussion on Spring Park. Number seven, presentation discussion on home based repair program. Number eight, discussion on parking in the city. Number nine, discussion on stop sign camera pilot program in Mount Rainier. Number 10, discussion on resolution of agreement between GATW CDC and the city of Mount Rainier and towns of Brentwood and North Brentwood for funding. Number 11, presentation discussion on council meeting rotation. Number 12, discussion of mayor and council priorities. Number 13, RPR discussion update. Number 32. And number 14, presentation of minutes. Oh, sorry. And number 15 adjournment.
Thank you so much. Council, please take a look at the agenda and see if there's any item you guys would like to delete or add on the agenda. And I think I see Luke here as well, so please mark him present. So Luke, you just got in right as Jared finished reading.
I'm gonna start making this a habit. I'm gonna, this is a good idea on my part. I stumbled across a brilliant idea.
I realize you're like, let Jared read it. He does such a wonderful job. All right, so council, do we have a working agenda? Yay, nay? Thumbs up if you're good? All right, I see Jared, we're good. I see thumbs up. Luke? All right, so we have a working agenda, okay? So thank you guys so much. So we'll move on to item number three. We do have various community members that are here for this item as well. A presentation and discussion on the intersection of 31st Street and Perry Street project. This is a 20-minute presentation discussion. The LID Center will present the first phase to mayor and council. So we do have here, Mr. Kamali, you wanna make the formal presentations, but I did some. Go ahead, Mr. I did Sahariko Neil here. Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, mayor and council. Yes, we do have LID Center here. Neil Weinerstein, the director of LID Center, to present the Phase One and talk to mayor and council about Phase Two. So I turn it over to Neil and I'll let Neil go over the presentation.
So I'll turn it over to Neil, but thank you, Neil. The floor is yours. And if you're speaking, your mic is muted, Neil.
I'm just gonna call the mayor.
Thank you, Sir Kamali. Neil, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We could hear you now. Thank you.
Let me go back to the share screen. Let me go, it's zero.
Melissa, can you give them share screen, please?
I got it, I think.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you both.
So I have about 15 PDF sheets here, so it gets a little complicated, but essentially what we're gonna do is, let me just walk you through these. We're going to take that existing, let me get to existing conditions plan. Right now, there's just that line of cones, traffic cones that keep getting run over in through here. And what we're going to do is, just for those of you who haven't been really involved in this, we can't close Perry Street off. We had several calls with the district of Columbia. They use this fire hydrant that's down here. They wanna have access in case there's an emergency to get through here. So this Perry Street's gonna have to remain since they own the entrance to it. It kinda goes to the back of the sidewalk of the lots. Did anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I can't see you, so if you can pipe up, unfortunately, so, cuz I can't see the whole screen on here. And so we developed, the key to here is keep this under 5,000 square feet so we don't have to get a permit, if possible, from the county because it's a long and involved process. And essentially what we're doing is cutting out the pavement. We're removing the old, some pavement down here. It just becomes a one-way street, so this is a good place to look at it. Hold on. Erosion control plan. Site plan for planning only, just to get go. So what happens now is gonna happen is if you come down Perry Street, you can only make a right. And you can only follow this around as a one-way street. If you're coming from Perry Street, coming down 31st Street, you can only make a right turn to come out. Or you could go straight and go down. This will be a one-way street.
Neil, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. If you go to C-1.7, you can have a better picture
Okay.
for the council to see it, yes.
Yeah, I know there are lots of notes on this here.
Yeah.
1.5, you can see we're doing repaving and repairing the park. This is good to see, so because this includes the pedestrian, so ADA requirements require as straight a shot as possible of American Disabilities Act, so you have to do a little jog here and pick this up as a crosswalk. There'll be another crosswalk here and another crosswalk here. So it'll be bike and pedestrian access through there. And that's just the signage sheets that goes on. So essentially, there's gonna be this big island which blocks the traffic. There'll be landscaped and it'll be having permeable pavements on it and locking poles, traffic control poles across here. So if a fire or emergency vehicle needs to get through here, they can just cut the bolt and push the bollard down. I see there are people in the waiting room. I don't know if you wanna let them in. These are just site details. This is a traffic control plan during construction. If you wanna keep there. And then we have a landscape plan for the islands themselves. So this'll be permeable pavers in through here. So like I said, there'll be three bollards. And if an emergency vehicle needs to get by, they can unlock the bollards or just cut them, cut the pin out of it and drive over to wherever they have to go. And then we found, we're gonna cut this pavement down and make it, cut the throat of this down and landscape this area into here. Did anyone, how do you wanna do questions?
So, Mr. Kamali, can you give us a quick rundown of what is gonna be added, deleted, and put to the area, please?
Well, what we're gonna do, we're gonna remove all the bollards and we're gonna have three landscaping area as Neil has shown it. One is gonna be in the middle where the native, you know, plants. And then we have one on the south side of the 31st Street, which Neil is pointing to. And then we have another landscaping area which is on the Perry side, that point that Neil is pointing to. So we're gonna have green street or green elements added and the traffic condition is gonna stay as the existing, you know, condition. And this is gonna be Phase One, right, Neil?
That's correct. So just to make one other comment on the islands, they can't, we can't run them all the way to the sidewalk because we'd be messing with the storm drain system and that would be, you'd have to get into the whole permit area and we'd have to really, not sure because of the way the water runs along the curb, if we can make that connection. And so this is the Phase One. We wanted to see what kind of bids we could get on it and based on the drawings. And we did get a bid from the construction people that are doing the memorial park. So they just handed us something the other day. So what we would do is take this other area in through here where the trees are and we would, we just came up with a quick concept the other day. That's, that will be the second phase of
Which is the Edgeman Park.
Which is Edgeman Park, that's correct.
Okay, so for the committee members, I see a lot of chatting on the chat, so I need you guys to do me a favor. If you guys would like to speak, name, last name, street and block number. If you just want me to read the comment, just read it and I'll read it, okay? All right, so one thing that was mentioned somewhere, I guess I'm gonna mention your comment before I go into council to address this because that's the same question I have. Sorry about that. The question was, can you go over the new traffic pattern one more time for Perry?
Okay, so, so we're coming down Perry Street. Can you see the hand there, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, is it one-way, two-way? So what does it looks like?
Perry Street will be, will be one-way. It'll be going down just like a regular traffic pattern. This will be out, the Eastern Avenue, from Eastern Avenue down. But you can only bear either right.
So, yeah.
Okay, so I'll go over to council right now to go through it cuz I know like there's a couple of questions for the, for the committee. Let me go to work too, Luke, first, cuz it's like, is there work? And then I'm gonna go after you with you, okay? Unless you wanna clarify something there on it right now, Luke, I could give it to you right now.
I would just clarify. Neil, can you, can you just clarify the traffic pattern and how, if at all, it would be different than it is now?
Well, right now, you have a single line of bollards.
Right.
Right.
So the traffic, the traffic pattern is gonna remain the same? Is that what you're saying?
Traffic pattern is gonna remain, yes, it will remain the same. Except now you have to drive over a curb and landscape if you really, really, you don't, just drive through the bollards. People have done.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to work too first. Jared, I'm gonna go with you, Valerie, followed by Luke. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just wanna, cuz I see resident questions in there and I wanna make sure, and I'm still a little confused. Okay, so just so I can clarify again, if you're coming southbound from top to bottom on 31st Street,
Right.
the only way you can go is to turn right and go west on Perry out to Eastern Avenue. So I'm following your hand, right?
Or you could go back to this one-way street.
Okay, which would
Those stops.
Which, okay, south or into the alley, okay?
Exactly.
Then if someone is turning onto Perry Street from eastern in either direction, they can go down, but the only thing they can do is turn, turn right.
Turn right, that's correct.
Okay.
Right. I mean, you could physically turn left, cross there, but that would be an illegal turn.
Okay.
Jared, I just wanna add to Neil's comment. We have not changed the traffic pattern, so the traffic is gonna stay the same.
It's just sturdier looking.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's what I thought. I just, there was some resident confusion in the chat and I was a little confused too when you kinda phrased it, so, thank you. That's, that is clear. Okay, I see the rest of my time.
All right, thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. And just to clarify, so if you're going west on Perry Street, you can't take a right onto 31st Street anymore, is?
So you're coming down Perry Street.
You have to take a left.
It's, the only movement you can do is come down here like this.
Okay, and then there's plantings down there, further down by the alley to kinda slow?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we're choking the traffic down to one lane.
Okay.
And let's say two people came up to this, one person moves this way on Perry and one person goes this way on Perry at the same time. They would have a little buffer area here to merge with each other, so they're not, you know, so, and they'll be striped, so you'll come this way and hopefully that person will stay in that lane. And then you'll come this way and then, then they merge together.
Okay, great. And then, and then the plantings in the middle, those are gonna be sturdy
Yeah.
and well, well recognized, so people can recognize that this is a place and not just, yeah.
They'll look kinda like the ones that are in the city now, the small buyer retention ones are over. We did a whole bunch of them, landscape plans for them over and
On 31st Street, 29th Street, just, just like in rain gardens that we have installed.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So if you try to run them over, basically you're gonna get stuck there?
Yes, well, it'd be just like driving a car.
Like on a ditch? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the bollards will be reflective, so nobody can have an excuse for driving.
Okay. All right, Luke, go ahead. You're next, and I'm seeing a lot of chat. Can you guys please put your name, last name, block and street number? So that way to call upon you guys. You guys will be next, after council. Go on, Luke, it's yours.
Okay, I think some of the questions that I have and some of the questions from the chat are, why wasn't there any consideration to changing the traffic pattern to maybe making it either one-way north on 31st Street Alley and 31st Street? Or one-way along Perry in either direction? So I guess the question is, was any thought given to that? If there was, what were considerations at play? If there wasn't, why not?
Well, you know, if this is just one-way on Perry, then it's, you know, you're gonna, where do you pick, where would you start that, you know? And then you're making everyone go this way to get out of the, and go loop around. So if you're coming from Perry from the east here, so everyone would have to loop around. The way it is now, if you pulled out of your driveway, you could just go make a right and leave without making an extra long turn around here. Same thing with this here. People still need to get access out of the subdivision.
Okay, Luke, you got that covered because I'm thinking like that big chunk right there, right next to Judy Santan House right there could be a one-way going opposing right. And when it comes to the emergency team, it does not apply to them, obviously, cuz they have a jurisdiction to go in that way if need be or utilize the fire hydrant. But that will, that will allow for people not to be exiting there.
Yeah, this will be do not enter where the hand is moving back.
Okay. All right, Luke, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Luke, if you're talking, your mic is closed. Oh, go ahead.
Yep. So going back to, would could 31st Street Alley be be one-way going north? Is there a reason why we have to keep it one-way going south? So 30, so 31st Street Alley is 31st Street, south of Perry, so right where your hand is, and then continuing as it curves. That's all called 31st Street Alley.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if that could be made one-way north? If there would be any issues with that, cuz I think part of the complaints from residents is that people come down Eastern Avenue and then turn a left down Perry and then a right down 31st Street Alley and then zip over in order to avoid traffic, in order to avoid the traffic light at Eastern Avenue and Rhode Island Avenue.
So in short words, instead of going from eastern to 30 whatever, it's gonna be from 30 whatever towards eastern? Yeah, because is that what you're aiming at, Luke? Cuz the north and south confuses a lot of people, including me.
So the 31st Street Alley where his hand kind of is, that would be going one-way up instead of one-way down.
Towards eastern.
Towards eastern, yeah, towards the subdivision. Because right now, when people come down eastern, they turn down Perry and then go down the 31st Street Alley to get over to Perry Street, pick up Perry Street again, and then get in the circle to avoid the light at eastern and Rhode Island.
I mean, you could, you could sign that so the no right turn during rush hour.
Could you block?
I'm thinking out loud. I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, could you extend the curb to block right-hand turn? Could you extend the storm drain to block right-hand turns from Perry?
This curve here?
Yeah, extend it out to the southwest corner so that people couldn't to the southwest corner of Perry.
You mean, cut it off?
Yeah.
I don't really know that. I mean, there's all these turn movements in there, so I, I'd like to be able to give you an answer right here, but I'm not sure I can to do that, because you have to look at the traffic pattern all the way to the east where it merges back into east. Cuz as I remember, that's like kind of a really funky little turn there.
Well, it would, it would prevent cars doing what I think residents are concerned about, which is at the, at the PM rush hour, they are coming southbound down Eastern Avenue.
Right.
They make a left onto Perry and then a quick right onto 31st Street Alley to cut through
Right.
to get to the circle.
Not way, and going to the circle.
And so I think, I think residents would be concerned. I think some, what we're hearing from some residents is that would it be possible to extend that out?
The curb?
Yeah.
This, when you're, when you're saying it's curb, you mean this over here where the hand is?
Yeah.
And cut, and cut all access?
Yeah, would that be possible? I don't know. Maybe residents should, should talk and say what they want, but I'm just wondering if that's possible.
I think we might have to go to location again, Luke, because I am seeing the screen like popping because they feel like now if you do that, it's gonna shoot up 31st Street. Once they see themselves stuck and don't move it up, the other thing is like do the fire emergency cars are gonna be able to get to the three houses that are, like two, three houses that are in the corner and go through the alley in case there's a fire emergency and the alley might be the easiest way for them to get to them. Right. And recycle pickup and whatever. So something that also Lucille and Kamali will have to let us know when it comes to anything as that. Yeah, it's, I definitely would like to see the pattern change, but I think we need to look into how to go about it. Because I see like, you know, it might not, you know, it might not address some of the issues that residents have and people driving through utilizing that as a shortcut. All right, so let me go to Danielle and then it's like I'll go, I'll go around and open up to the public because I am gonna ask something before we go on. Can we go ahead and have another, realistically 10 more minutes? Because time has already like run out.
Yeah, I'll move to add 15 minutes.
Okay, so probably moved in, in second. It's okay, we didn't have third one, but is it probably move second and third? Any objection? Discussion, objection? None. Okay, Melissa, can you go ahead and add another 10, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, can you see this? Here's a schematic of the park area that we could look.
Yeah.
Can you see that on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, this photo is a little bit easier to see.
Yeah, so yeah, so you you can see with how wide the uh alley is over here. And what we would come through is gotta be, we have to be careful because some of this property in this triangle is owned by the district, actually. Um, and uh we would put a pathway through and avoid the trees that are there now. And um put some seating areas essentially and some landscaped areas.
So Neil, before I go to Danielle, how much of that street up there belongs to DC? Can you like more or less mark it?
Um, yeah, so everything up on eastern, on this part through here, it's the back of the sidewalk.
And how far this it goes in?
No, it's just the at the back of the sidewalk is where DC owns it.
Alright, okay, Danielle, go ahead.
And then when it comes in this corner here, because there's a little bigger area, it like juts out into it.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Danielle.
Okay, thank you. Um, my um, I I'm hearing what you're saying and and I've um had some of the residents in this area um contact me either talking in person or calling me or emailing me. And a lot of them, what I'm hearing is they want that little splinter is what I'm calling it, the Perry Street Splinter, to be one way out and not allowing access in except for emergency vehicles. Um, and I think that uh because their problem is is that it doesn't matter how the traffic on Perry Thirty First goes. If they have the access off of Eastern Avenue onto that area, they're gonna either go down the alley or they're gonna go up Thirty First, which is just gonna cause even more trouble. Um, also, um, the um emergency vehicles coming out of Station Fifty Five on Rhode Island Avenue. If, say, Bob or Tom or even Teresa's house catches fire or Tracy or any of those, they have to have an ambulance or a fire truck. They're coming down Perry Street. They're not coming on eastern, they're coming down Perry Street. So they're gonna need to be able to get from Perry onto Thirty First. Will they be able to do that? Because I'm gonna tell you, as somebody who drove an ambulance, I will run over some grass. I don't care. And an ambulance and a fire truck will tear things up. Because and we have to consider the liability issue on that as well. If a fire truck, if Bob's neighbor up Thirty First needs a fire truck, they gotta come down Perry and they gotta be able to get out. Right now, they're gonna have to back up. And that is not good. So we need to be able to give Station Fifty Five the 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 same consideration of how they're gonna get in and get out. Because you don't want to block emergency vehicles, and right now they are blocked. Um, and I I strongly would love and like uh Selena, I think, mentioned, Mayor mentioned, turning that splinter into a one-way out and no access in unless you're an emergency vehicle. Um, because that that will actually solve the traffic problem. If they're not coming in off of eastern, we don't have to worry about all the other stuff. So I and and personally, if we could, I'd love to take that road out and turn it into a green state. But I also acknowledge the necessity for DC to come in there, though that's Mount Rainier, so Station Fifty Five is actually gonna be the one responding, Fifty Five and Forty Four. DC's not gonna respond to anything there, but they will probably want to access the the um the fire hydrant. I do know that there is a representative in the audience from the fire department. You can ask him or he can speak on that. But I personally would love to see that road closed off to Eastern Avenue access entirely. And I think that is what will improve the quality of life for the residents in that area and improve the traffic problem.
Okay. So do keep in mind that the entrance of the street is not ours. So this this is one of the reasons why it's a little bit sensitive. Neil also mentioned there is a square there that belongs to DC as well. So we are walking a fine line of what we can do based it on our jurisdiction and not. Alright, so I will like go off, I'll say my comments for right now, because I already like put in, but let me read a couple of them. I apologize, this thing has been like, you know, lighting up like the Christmas tree. Uh, ta ta ta, hold on. So I have the first comment. Uh Mario, do you wanna say, okay. The only fire hydrant is in the northeastern corner intersection. Uh, can you go over the new traffic pattern? Can we address that with the residents in this station? We're hoping to have one way up Thirty First to eastern. Can Perry be made out of one way? Ooh, duh, uh, got it, thanks. Okay, uh, Tom. Tom, do you wanna speak? Because I have you several times in the chat. Tom Thompson? How big are the new poles gonna be? Uh, Kamali or Neil, how big are the poles gonna be?
Uh, they're just, I think they're like thirty inches high or waist-high. And round. And then they fold down, so.
Okay. Uh, the traffic, uh, Tom said the traffic flow has been an assistant, really, so what's happened to slow down all the speeding commuters? And dangerous thirty years looking, uh, meaning just what? Okay. Uh, Fire Soli- uh, Valerie Soliski from Thirty First Street, thank you Valerie. Um, fire emergency vehicles will still have access, yes. Also, is there text available? Uh, so I'm finding it very hard to hear a lot of discussion. Um, I'm I don't know, I'm uh somebody from the team is is there text available? Is that something that people could put on their own? Uh, the other is like, um, I know if you see it on our, I think YouTube, it just shows up. I think they have it set up like that. Uh, we do not, Mario says, we do not want that many people take this route to avoid the light of the corner of Island, assuming it's like the traffic pattern. Hopefully they will stay in their lane. Um, not believable. Um, uh, Bob of Vanderbilt, um. You know, I love you guys too dear, but I'm gonna have to ask you guys to start putting your information, because I have like twenty different comments from each of you guys, so I'm gonna close the chat until it's time to open it. Because another is gonna take the out, whole afternoon reading, and some of them, I think they've been addressed. No traffic change, what's the point? Okay, so let me tell you guys something. Um, I'm gonna, the last comment I'm gonna read uh is from John Haynes. John, uh, you're from the Mount Rainier Fire Department, a vice president of the fire, uh, Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. We'd like to say something and anybody else, if you'd like to say something, I'm gonna just give you the mic because um it's 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 a lot to, it's various things to read. And um, and how do you call it? Um, I don't think I'll be able to address not even half of those. Alright, so um, Mr. Haynes, can you go ahead and um uh give your feedback as far as the Mount Rainier Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department, please, and thank you for your service as well?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The one big issue that that I was, we were worried about is we had an incident with the yellow poles already, which was sustained heavy damage to the apparatus. Where they ran over them and they thought that they were collapsible, but they're not. Now, these new poles you're gonna put in, nobody's gonna get out of the apparatus and unlock them or or move them out of the way. You're just blocking the access to this this thirty-one hundred block of Perry Street. We want to get away from blocking the access. We want to be able to have free access. Because essentially, you're putting a big liability issue with the city of Mount Rainier. And if somebody's house catches on fire in that hundred block, those fifteen houses, somebody in there and it goes to court, they're gonna ask someone why they blocked the end of the street off. And what for? And I don't think the city has enough money to go to court about that. We only have one way in that Perry Street. And off of the circle, there's a little island that somebody has put in in the middle of the street where we have to try to maneuver around that. Even though that's one way, we can get in there with a fire truck, but if there's someone parked on the other side of the street next to that, it blocks our access. We cannot get down to Perry Street. The other issue with this design, you have several gardens in here, and I have no access to the hydrant at Thirty First and Perry. In front of thirty uh thirty-one hundred Perry Street, there's no access to that hydrant. I can't get to it. It, you know, if you put poles up there, and I don't know how wide that is that you have there, but.
But so that's if you're twelve foot wide.
It's twelve feet wide?
Yes.
Okay, so if you don't even put, don't put the poles in, then yes, we could have access through there. But nobody's gonna get out of the ambulance or the fire truck and unlock a pole or 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 even think about even running them over, because we've already tried that and we've damaged the ambulance really heavy.
Look, if, I mean, if you're okay with it, uh, we could just do a Malcimer curb there.
Yeah, so somebody can go across it.
Right, you're just gonna have a bump.
Even the police, you gotta give police access.
Right, that's no, no problem removing it.
So actually, y- you know, there there's a few other problems. The the width of the the bump out at the Thirty First Street Alley, is that ten feet wide? At least ten feet wide?
Uh, the bump out's probably, I I don't know, I can't really tell from the drawing.
Because we're gonna need at least ten feet to get the fire truck through there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it it should be at least ten feet wide.
Now, the alley behind there, it gives us access to those houses on that odd side.
Right.
That's the reason for the alley. Believe it or not, it's that's the reason for emergency vehicles to get to side Charlie of those houses. Um, the other thing, uh, off my mind here. Oh, you're 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 DC, if you're worried about the District of Columbia uh controlling that intersection at Perry and and Eastern Avenue, DC only controls eight feet in from the curb.
Right.
That's the line of DC, it runs through the yards and you can still put up a a one-way sign right there. You can still put up one-way sign in Mount Rainier saying one-way. Uh, um, the people can still see it. Um, you can put them up on both sides, but Danielle had a great idea, is make that small street one-way and that will control all the traffic coming in. You you know, if you want to stop that, that's fine. People coming south on Thirty First Street, they can make the right and leave the city where wherever they want to go.
Yeah, so we we had a meeting um with the DC with their a permit review agency and the fire, their fire marshal was also there. Um, we had by phone and and they really do not want that street closed off or messed with.
Right.
Too bad.
Um, and we, you know, you don't control the the, I mean.
We could make it, we could make it one-way.
You could make it one-way, but then I, there has to be some coordination with the district.
Well, it'd be coordination, but I can drive down a one-way street as much as a police car can. I'm driving a fire truck, I'll go down the one-way street. I've done it on Oden Street, I've done it on many streets around here.
Thank you guys so much. Just to point out, it's like I have my screen being flashed by the city clerk, letting us know that time is up. And um, we need to add more time to this, or you know, decide completely as counsel for us to go back to a drawing board. I mean, even if DC controls only a feet, it's not like we're gonna put a sign and say, do not go on beyond this point, because the reality is like we're not having people listening to signs. And that's been a big issue when it comes to the corner. I mean, unless you put it in the middle of the street, which which will affect our emergency cars, it's, people are just gonna go in. Once they're in, they're gonna pile through whatever side of the street they want to get in to get out. I don't see them doing a U-turn to go back into eastern. That ain't gonna happen. That's the reality of it. Alright, okay, so um, I'm gonna read through and I and I ask you guys to, I'm gonna give you guys the mic, so go ahead and state your piece, because I have a lot of messages. But saying that, can I go ahead and add ten more minutes from the council to this item?
I moved to add ten minutes.
A second.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second. So I'm I'm gonna be honest with you guys, due to time, I'm just gonna make the motion and somebody seconded, okay? Because uh we need to move and allowing this time to move forward, not for this item, but for the other ones. Alright, so um, discussion, objection, abstention here, and now that's ten more minutes added to this clock. Okay, so I'm gonna start calling up on people. I love y'all, but you guys have to stay your peace, because there's a lot of mini comments here. So Tom Thompson, Thirty First Street, that mic is yours, go ahead.
Uh, hmm, okay, I'm having some trouble. I know a lot of people have done a lot of work on this already, but I don't really see the benefit of what's being talked about or what's being planned in terms of slowing down traffic and especially making the intersection safer. Um, I thought John's comment about Perry Street and our ability to do, for the most part, whatever we want to do with it, which is really welcome. And I appreciate what he's saying about uh emergency vehicle access. Uh, one of my worries is that the term free access for emergency vehicles, whether it's um uh a fire truck or an ambulance, means free access for commuters. And maybe some of you think that signage is going to affect uh traffic congestion or traffic control. It's not. There's there's signs and signs and signs all over this intersection and people ignore them. And I've never seen the police in all the years I've lived here, even once, stop somebody and give them a ticket for an oversized truck with, and they have to be able to see the sign that says no trucks or trailers, because if they don't see it, they'll go right through the bollards that are now at the intersection. I've never seen anybody get a ticket for U-turns. I've never seen anybody get a ticket for anything. Any violation of any of the signage, and there are a lot of signs. So the the solution is not gonna be signage. Um, but whatever the solution is, I hope that somehow, and I thought Mario's suggestion was a good one, there needs to be more involvement by residents who are for this, against that, so that whatever we come up with um as a solution involving hundreds of thousands of dollars is something that we can all live with. But to leave, to leave the traffic pattern the way it is, I don't think it makes sense, frankly. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't make the area any safer. And there are more and more small children because of this new generation of families coming in, and they deserve a safe intersection. We have a park there that kids like to use. We have kids on bicycles, um, and we we have to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, which brings us to a point, Neil, Kamali, since I have you here as well. Can we have uh the collapsible bollards, kind of like what uh Jules has in front of it, where if you don't know any better, they're there? But emergency fire equipment could just like run over them if they need to.
I believe that design, Mayor, was for the collapsible bollards. It's not a fixed one. Uh, and I think uh if I recall it correctly, because Neil and I and David were talking about this, that fire department needs to have access. And uh I believe that was the uh the final design, you know, before before we get to that point, but we can look at it and get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, they could just be plastic kind that are almost out there now, and someone really wants to go through it, they'll.
I mean, I was thinking across the lane, like, you know, across the street. So that with you driving by it and you know any better, you like stay away from it, right? Because you're not gonna turn if you see a bunch of like, you know, um little stakes across the street, right? But the fire department could like just go through them because they're collapsible.
Right, the they're the plastic.
Or the or the PD department, because that's that was one of the concerns that I've heard repeatedly, right? They do need access to the alley, they do need access to any of those houses and and depending where the fire truck is, I know we want to ideally feel like the fire truck might be coming for the fire station, but if they're out out returning from a call or out like from feeling water or anything else, eastern might be the fastest way for them to get to Thirty First and necessarily um, not necessarily Perry, same thing go for PD. If they're if they're gone on on Rhode Island, they made a turn on eastern, then I go, then I go back, how do you call it, to the other way on Thirty Four to enter. Do entry to whatever is the fastest way for them to enter, whether it's the alley, whereas um Perry Thirty First to try to get to where the emergency is at. But let's figure out if we could look into that, because that will solve uh blocking that traffic, right? But at the same time, our emergency personnel will be able to get through. But um I would definitely encourage the neighbors, because a lot of the offenders are also our neighbors, not just random people from DC. Or traveling to to like not speed and go, because when we have ran over plates of who some of those offenders are, they're Mount Rainier residents, which we were very shocked and surprised that they might leave like three houses over, they might leave like a block over, but a lot of times it's not just outsiders, it's also us. Alright, so I'm gonna have Mario, um, and then followed by Bob. Go ahead and I'll continue calling on the list. Alright, go ahead, Mario.
Yeah, yes, um, I'm on Thirty Eight oh four Thirty First Street, and to me, I think I I would prefer the one-way out to eastern, that way we we can take take out the the middle planter, the big planter out of the out of there. Um, and I I suggest that we we'll have another meeting. Um, and I, I suggest that we, we'll have another meeting, city, you know, city officials, the fire department, and the police, the residents there, so we can really see what, what, what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. I think you're done, or you cut off, Mario? I just heard thank you, and then shut off.
Oh yeah, I'm done, thank you.
That was the quickest shut-off on mic that I've seen in my life.
Well, I wanna give all the people the time to.
Thank you, generous of you, Mario. All right, Bob, you're next.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I, I wanted to thank the, the, uh, the council, Luke and Jared, and I think Valerie was there the day that we all met on that curb, and the police chief, uh, I mean, the fire chief, I think his name is John Hines, because he seemed to echo what the group wanted. This drawing impressively does exactly the opposite of what we asked for. So I don't know why the council, uh, and the residents knew everything, and the, and then the drawing is like backwards, cause we wanted the flow of traffic to go out, out of Perry, and go up towards Eastern, not back in, as it is now, I can't, I, if I went down Perry, I can't make a left on Thirty First and get to my house. So it's like I'm being penalized for bringing up what we wanted to do for changes. We want people not to be able to come off Eastern, cut down Perry, and then cut down the alley. Um, so I'm in favor of one-way out from, from Perry. Um, I don't care about all the gardens and stuff, they're irrelevant to me. Um, but as long as we can get the flow of traffic, not directing it into town, but rather out of town, that's where I'd rather go. That's all I got, thanks.
Mayor, you're muted, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm looking to like call the names of people, because you guys have like a thousand messages in between, and if I missed you, just let me know, um. And I'm gonna butcher your name as always, I am so sorry. Uh, could, could you get it, could you?
Yeah.
J E, go ahead and tell me how to say it again, sorry.
It's Haukya.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm at Thirty Eight oh six, right next to Bob and Mario. Um, I'm kinda in agreement with Bob, what Bob just said, we just want the traffic to go out. The problem is that, the, when rush hour hits, all those cars trying to take a left onto, from Eastern to Rhode Island, wanna cut through our little corner to avoid that light, which doesn't have that left-hand green turn. So I don't know what happened, I don't know if this piece of this section right here of Mount Rainier got missed in the larger traffic study that was just done, but I would love to have heard what they discussed and reviewed about this situation here, because, I mean, that's a major intersection, and, you know, all my neighbors, we've all heard the accidents crashing at that corner because of the lack of the left-hand light signal at Eastern and Rhode Island, that's the problem. And I know it's out of our jurisdiction, I know that, but I think it's worth, you know, before we mess with fire access, because that's a problem. If you can't get fire trucks in and out of there, I think we need to take our time with this. I mean, in the meantime, the barriers do prevent the cut-through, they just have to go through the alley. Yeah, there's, you know, pissed off peoples, you know, and then the alley becomes a problem, but I think this needs to be thought through a little bit more before, before you spend any money on it. That's, that's all I got.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, that's the reason why we're bringing it here, so we could discuss it, it means like today's the decision, it's just a work session to clarify that. It's just to have the conversation, to see where the team has been and what proposals are going through. And then the idea is also to go to the community and have a conversation as well, but, um, because we can only all, you know, talk about it in open meeting, that's the reason why it's here for us to discuss. All right, um, so I think, uh, the next person was Valerie Solinsky, followed by Jack and Tracy. Go ahead, uh, Valerie, you wish to speak, or no?
No, 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 I, I was commenting in the chat, but I don't need to speak here.
Okay, so, okay, perfect, uh, Jack and Tracy?
Uh, I was commenting in the chat, but I don't need to speak here, thank you.
Okay, Elise?
Uh, no, I don't need to speak, thanks.
All right, perfect, I'm, am I missing somebody that's talked in the, in the chat? Apologies if I do, it's just like you guys had like so, you guys have a whole, full conversation in the chats, it's hard to follow through as we're getting, um, we're getting answers back and forward. All right, so, team, um, it looks like we might have to draw, go back to the, to the drawing board to address some of the, um, some of the things that were addressed by the community members and council. And, um, in order to address some of the, some of the power control possibilities, and to point out to people that we've had actually, uh, two meetings, correct me if I'm, right? Um, two meetings where DC, um, council member Sacre Parker and his team have been, uh, part of when it comes to like the issues that street caused. Some of you guys did talk to them specifically in the last roundabout. Uh, yeah, from, uh, DC, um, yeah, this, uh, War Five DC, uh, Sacre Parker, yes. So he was there, so we are gonna be having a follow-up meeting with them to figure out where some of the tickets are, because we did let them know that that's an issue, um, going into there, because if we do not like, you know, coordinate, we could put us a one-way street there, but if there's no turning, say, no, no signs on their behalf, people are gonna turn there, um, thinking it's fine, and ignore any notices that we have until they're like, they're inside, you know, even if it's eight feet inside. All right, and that could potentially create, um, head-on collisions and so on and so on, so can we make sure also our team is talking to them, to let them know that this is more or less, you know, if we change the traffic pattern, that this is where we're going? So that way they are aware, so that way they push forward to some of those, uh, signage that, um, we have recommend. All right, so, uh, Mr. Kamali, was there something else you needed to add, or, or Neil regarding this? I think you guys talked about a face too, or do you guys wanna just go back to drawing board, um, in, in, once we have another meeting, and you guys get some of the answers that were, that were, um, that were put, um, in place?
Exactly, Mayor, I would like to have another meeting, and I do appreciate community involvement, and to hear their voice, because, you know, the more we can hear from this issue, we can, you know, work better on the plan. And I do appreciate everybody's patience, and definitely we're gonna, you know, make everybody happy, hopefully.
At least we're gonna try, right, even if it's a little bit here, a little bit there, making sure that our, our emergency teams are, um, their voices, um, also heard, because I think that if we close it completely, that might be eventually a problem. So I said, don't get rid of the community, to the water storm issue-solving problems, but we might have to rethink about it when it comes to like the ramps and stuff like that, that the fire department said it might be useful to them, trying to get in and out through, um, the whole entire, um, those four intersections and through the valley. Okay, all right, so, community, they're gonna go back, our team is gonna go back to the drawing board, and we are, yeah, Mario, I know you were for sure there when it came, and you did hear, um, Sacre's, um, council member Sacre Parker did say that he was gonna work on, uh, work with us along. So we have another meeting to address these issues as well, I know, uh, Jared does talk to his team about various issues as well. So we're gonna continue, um, that communication. All right, so Neil and I D, um, Kamali, thank you guys so much, as well as our wonderful Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department for their, um, work. And if any of you guys wanna volunteer for the fire department, they are taking volunteers. Reach out, it's gonna be a little blurb in our newsletter that tells you how to reach them, and how you could become a volunteer fire, um, fire department member. All right, so, see, John, I'm working along with you guys. All right, thank you so much, John. Okay, all right, you guys, uh, time is up, and I am gonna move on to the next item. Can I have, uh, the agenda on, you know, if you could give, um, uh, there you go.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that Melissa had, um, access back, so, uh, back again. Melissa, you have the access again, right? Thank you, Melissa.
Have a nice evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you. All right. All right, perfect, so now we're moving on to item number four. Um, it is seven fifty-five, council. Uh, just so you are aware, and we are in item number four of like thirteen items, or something along those lines. All right, uh, item number four, presentation and discussion on wayfinder signs from users' construction, is a twenty-minute discussion. Uh, users' construction present the wayfinder size to mayor and council, and we have, um, wonderful Shirley, but we also have, um, our Economic Department Director, uh, Ron is also here, so, Ron, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, can you, everyone hear me?
We could hear you now.
Yes, good evening, everyone, um, so I'm here with, uh, Shirley from User Construction, also with Kurton. We have two samples of signs that are up for consideration. These are wayfinding signs for our downtown Main Street area. Um, that's the first, uh, design that you see on the screen, and there's another one, Melissa, if you could bring that up as well. All right, so we have three actual designs, um, so we're just asking you for feedback, any questions, what are your desires, and any conversation?
All right, perfect, so just a point of information, these are signs that you will find in various cities, directing people where are some of the key locations at, and ideally guiding not just residents to where important things are at, but also visitors who are coming, um, through town, um, you know, basically that's it, all right. So I'm gonna start with word one, uh, Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, could you go back to, um, the last line?
The first one, that one, Luke?
Um, yeah, is there a reason we didn't go with like the, just the regular blue and black that kind of DC uses and Heightsville uses?
That's the city colors.
I understand that, but like, it's a little, um, it's not as, there's not as much contrast, I don't like how there's just not that much contrast. Um, and I don't know if I'm a fan of the, the font, but, um, I'm just wondering, did we just pick that just because that's the, the colors we use on our paper, is that the only reason, or was there other, any other considerations given to different colors?
So, uh, we didn't pick anything, so this, this is the option for you to look at the signs and tell us what you like, so nothing has been decided as yet.
Is it the shape, Ron, more than anything? Is that what it is? I'm sorry, clarified, go ahead.
No, I, I would just say, um, could you walk me through the, the rationale for these three options then? And why these colors were chosen, and the, the font, and things of that nature? What went into that thought process?
Do you want me to answer, Shirley, or do you wanna answer?
Uh, sure, I mean, uh, I, I can, we, it's a number of things, I guess I can just, just elaborate a little bit. Hello, good evening, everyone, just wanna say hello, um, I'm Shirley Bouvier-Rumbel, happy to join you, um, on the call today, and, um, I, there's obviously, when I'm working, we're, working with a signage, um, consultant here, who's also on the phone, Kurton, um, Bandry, who's with us, um, there are standard fonts that are more legible, cause remember, you're, you, you wanna make sure that the vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffics, um, you know, not all of us have great vision, like, like me. Um, and so there are certain font that just read well from afar. Um, and so that's the primary reason for selecting this type of font. And also, as you look here, we've got some dimensional, um, information provided here, so you have a six-feet-tall individual next to the sign, which should be somewhere between that, that ten-feet height, um, so that, again, you're, it's visible, um, and you have these key marquees that folks can easily see which direction to go in, from various directions, from both, um, both ends of Rhode Island, and of course, the roundabout on Thirty Fourth Street. So, um, I'll let, um, Kurton, please feel free to chime in and add additional information you think might be helpful in responding. If Kurton's still on.
Yes, sorry. Hear me?
Yes, Kurton, I can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it working?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so we just, it's, it's, we were told, we want something that's colorful, or something with the colors, the fonts, the number of directions, shape, everything is up to the city and the community to decide, because they just can't stand the shape that you see uh, in different places. The only thing we need to make sure is the size is proportional to like what Shirley said, reading distance. So you need to be able to reassign from maybe a hundred feet.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Luke, does that more or less answer your question? Where are you at?
Yeah, I think, um, I think, I, I think, just for my part, um, I think there, I don't like the cursive downtown. I think that's, um, just a little too much, it gives, there's not enough, um, it's too many letters, too much going on in the sign. You could just have it say, Mount Rainier, Maryland, um, and I think that, that gets the point across. Um, I also am partial to like the blue signs that most everybody else has used with the white contrast. Um, I'm not totally opposed to any of these options, um, but I feel like they're a little busy, and the different colors sort of, it, it just, it's just too, too busy, there's too much going on. And so from a, like, an, an aesthetic perspective, I just don't think these are that good-looking. Um, so I would want something different. Um, I'd also be interested in the placement of these, like where we'd wanna put them around town. Um, I'd be interested to know where we, we want them to go, and what they would say, like I would, um, obviously around the circle, um, I would think Thirty Fourth and Bunker Hill would be a good place. Um, and you could point to different things, like Joe's Movement Emporium, um, or even Spring Park, or the Nature Center, things like that, but just be, I, before giving the okay, I'd wanna know kinda where all these are going, and, um, what they would say on each one of them in, in those locations, cause you'd want it, you'd want it to say different things in different locations.
Okay, Danielle?
Um, I tend to agree with Luke on some of this, um, my thought, um, hearing what you guys are saying, I like the idea that there's the green and the yellow. Um, I wonder if maybe the top and the very bottom could be green and yellow, cause that's our, our colors, and then like Luke was saying about the black and white, or the dark blue and white contrast in the middle, or something that complements that color, but will make the, the arrows and the words pop. So I do like the idea of keeping it green and yellow, but I agree with Luke, if, if that looks too tacky, then, you know, um.
Okay, can we make sure we keep our comments a little professional? Because this is people's work that we're talking about, and words like tacky is not the kind of language that we should be using.
Fair enough.
Can it, can it be, uh, this is not what you guys envisioned? And that's fine if you guys don't envision that, but let's be very aware of like the language we're using, this is people's hard work right there.
Fair enough, fair enough, my apologies, um, busy, I, I will go with busy. Um, personally, I'd love to see it green and purple, because those are my colors, but, you know, um, I, I, I have to agree about the cursive, uh, font, I think downtown is too much, but we have, you know, so many different business districts, so, you know, like if we have it here in the Rhode Island area, you know, like differentiated from other parts of the city, um, but yeah, I think removing downtown, the cursive is too much, but yeah, I'd like to see some other items.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, uh, I'm, sorry, let me just chime in.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, basically, the design is up to you guys, if you want something specific, you can, the community can decide what color, what. Those are not major issues, that, these are signs, we can make it any color, any font, any text, anything you want, that's up to the community. And designs are something that's very personal. The last time we did the Mount Rainier facade, it took like six or seven community meetings to get it right. And even then, we ended up changing half the stuff because of the, the, and seeing what it is. So design is very personal, you guys can come up with the design. So the only thing you have to basically decide right now is, do you want it, do you not want it? How many of these do you want around town? And what markers should it want to, because I, I don't live there, I don't really know what's important. In terms, this is just stuff we took and said, hey, maybe these are the important markets in a city, right? So these are things the community and the town needs to decide, and then we can always make it. So you can pick colors, you can pick fonts, everything, that really doesn't matter. So you can pick colors, you can pick fonts, everything. That really doesn't matter.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna go with Jared and Valerie.
Uh, thank you so much for coming tonight and then, then bringing this to us. And I, I did want to thank you for your work on this. Cause wayfinding is really important, especially with folks that aren't from the city. Uh, to just understand and figure out where institutions or where this, uh, where a business park is. So, um, I, you know, I, I think I was just gonna make a couple of broad statements, knowing that this is, um, you know, this is a, uh, evolving, evolving process, but, um, I, I did want to say, um, I, I unless folks disagree, I'd kind of like this, I'd like to stay consistent. We have some signs that I think you guys all know, the green ones where edges of the city, um, that show, you know, Mount Rainier, Maryland or, um, founding date and a picture of a streetcar like. I, I prefer to stay aesthetically similar. Um, if we're gonna install new signs. I, I personally, I like white on green. I like the simplicity. Um, but I mean, that's, you know, just me. I also dress and really grab colors. So, um, so usually one or two. So I, to be frank, the first one is the one I, I liked. It's simple and straightforward. I, I do not, I, I agree with everyone else, but downtown, we don't really need that. But, um, you know, the otherwise it's, it's, in my opinion, it looks, uh, simple, minimalist and, but very clear. Um, I did want to ask, and I, and I like the uniform, um, color. I didn't like the changing all, all over the place. Cause it, it does kind of deviate from our existing, uh, the existing kind of color scheme that we use. Um, are we limited to just five of these? Uh, sorry, five, um, uh, actually, if you could give me like how, how, how tall is this unit?
Uh, you can go as long as you want. It really doesn't matter. I mean, there's a certain limitation, but before it gets too busy, but you are not limited to that. We just didn't know what to put there.
No, 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 it's okay. So like, is there a, I, I, I guess not understanding how tall that actually is, like conceivably you look at five to seven or something max.
Jared, the little person that's next to from what I'm understanding is six foot tall. So we'll be like, you know, maybe five, five, five where the shoulders stop to go up or something along those lines.
Yeah.
So that will be.
Okay, so yeah.
That's how tall it is.
Oh yeah, five or, five or so. Um, gotcha. Okay. Five or six or seven or yeah, that, 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 that makes, um, that makes, uh, sense to me. Um, yeah. And I, I think otherwise, you know, good approach. I think there is kind of bigger question of where we put them, how many, um, you know, I, I obviously want to point to our public institutions, public parks. And just, you know, business districts in general, obviously. I don't think we want to refer to a specific, um, organization or anything. I think we'd want to stick to, you know, here's our 34th Street, Rhode Island, Barnum Parks, uh, you know, public park, other, other, uh, consistent, um, uh, consistently located, uh, institutions. So, um, that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, perfect.
I have a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
So this, um, this is a grant funded from our main street designation. So it only highlights our down, our main street area. So that's Rhode Island Avenue and 34th Street. So those are there, that's where the signs will be positioned in that area only.
Okay. So that definitely answers the, the, the other questions. It is, okay. So that's the reason why it also says downtown. I guess that makes more sense because of the mainstream grant. Jared, do you want to say one more thing before I move to Valerie? Cause I know like that was.
No, and thanks for that clarification, Ron, and I appreciate that because it is important to understand in the context of this discussion, what limitations we have. So are, are these wayfinding signs, if they can only be, can you define the, uh, Main Street district for the purposes of this grant for me?
It doesn't have to say, um, particularly Main Street. You know, that's why they put downtown. In, in fact, we're a Main Street affiliate designation. So we cannot use the name Main Street in any of our literature, signs or things like that. Is that your question?
No, no, it's where, so this can only be, this is, you know, in our, in our downtown, which is for the purposes of this is 34th and Rhode Island, correct?
Yes. So we were looking at, um, the entrance from Road, Eastern Avenue and Rhode Island Avenue in that median there. Um, in the circle, having two signs in a circle and at the, uh, at the far end of Rhode Island Avenue by the fire department. So we're looking at four signs, partic, maybe five.
So are they pointing people toward downtown from the edges of the downtown? Is that it?
Yes. And up to 34th Street as well. Yes. So once you enter like Mount Rainier through via Rhode Island Avenue, it shows you the different landmarks in that area, highlighting our downtown area. Yes. Our Main Street.
Okay. Now this, this, that's helpful. I think, um, yeah, I, I would have reframed my, I think, questions and such so far. So, okay. So it sounds, so I, I, I would just also suggest that, you know, if we are, when we move forward at these, you know, we're gonna do more. They're gonna want to do more wayfinding signs later, I'm assuming. And we're gonna want to utilize the same template, even though there's only four of them in this first go. And thank you, Ron, for, um, and Mr. Kamali and then staff for bringing the money and the resources in for this. But I just want to make sure we think about, um, okay, where these are precision, but then we're definitely gonna want to probably do more. Uh, and, and, and think about how we keep the, uh, wayfinding and the, uh, look and everything else consistent. So, thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Jared. Valerie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, well, thank you. This is, um, I'm excited to see what we're doing here. Um, thank you for bringing it to us. Um, the, um, I actually, I'm gonna disagree with everyone else, and I actually do like the downtown cursive. I think it's cute. Um, and so I'm just gonna tell you that, but I don't know. Um, I do think, um, I do think I like the green, uh, option A or option C was the second favorite because it's more bold. But I think keeping it all one color is, is probably good and better and easier to read. Um, I'm not gonna worry about the font, um, either. Um, I, I do, I mean, this is a Main Street program, so it makes sense to have it in the downtown area of Mount Rainier. But like Jared said, I definitely think that if we're going to be investing there, that we will want to invest in the Barnum Street District and, and other areas, um, in wayfinding. And I know the city is also thinking about going forward with, um, a new branding or new logo or trying to figure out which logo we're gonna use going forward. So I, I would just keep your eyes peeled to that as well. Um, and I agree, um, with, I saw some comments in the chat that distances are helpful. Um, and not time. One time I was hiking in Chamonix and they told us how, how long it would take you to get there, but that's not gonna be helpful. So distances are important. Um, and, um, I'm gonna keep my comments there. So thank you. And I look forward to seeing the next iteration and then in the plan, I'd like to see a proposal, like an actual plan on like where they're gonna go. You know, how many people are gonna see them and things like that. So.
So thank you so much, Valerie. Uh, I am at option A. Um, you know, and, um, I also like the downtown part to it. I will say the Rainier one, the R A I, whatever that lettering is, that's the part that I'm not fond of. If you guys could make it more straight out through, right? But it's very hard to read the R A and for people that are, um, that can see very much like me. Because they're complicated. All right. So, um, it's so in, in saying that, I think that I agree that, you know, I'm glad. So thank you, Ron and, and team for making sure that, um, we were able to get this funding for this. I think it's like a beginning, right? So it allows for us to see, you know, what else we want for the rest of the city, but the fact that the city doesn't have to, um, pay for it. Um, that does, um, it, it warms my heart very much. I will say that. It does. Cause right now we, we're gonna have a lot, a lot of construction expenses and we're still working through those, right? So I'm very, um, partial on it. And I will say, yeah, I think that other cities, I believe Hyattsville, if, if not just Brentwood, they do have something similar like what you mentioned, Valerie. And I think I like that idea to add, like point something so that we're aware how, what the distance is, right? Um, that definitely will help see, now you're close. If you decide to walk to it, you're not envisioning it's around the corner. It's like, you know, have a mile from where you're standing. Then nothing's very far from our Rainier, but still that's a difference on whether or not I'm gonna walk it. Okay. Well, I'm gonna ride a car or walk it. That's the reality. I'm not biking anywhere. But some people might want to bike it, right? But I think that's a good, um, good recommendation. And I think the fact, if we keep it to downtown Rainier like that without putting the logo, definitely like would not affect us like when we do the branding. When it comes to like, uh, potential, uh, new logo, right? So that's good. The other thing is like right now, just to be clear, there's only two logos the city should be using is the trolley one and, um, and the little mountain one and the mountain, because it's the original one, but man, that's really hard to get a very clean copy of that logo. So any reason why I said that one is because that's the only like, um, logo pin that I have that was like passed down to like from other, uh, from past mayors. But I, I would say, um, option A is the one that I like. Um, I like the colors, you know, they're, they're a little bit brighter and that's for ads. So, um, so far I hear three in support of option A. Um, with the added caveats, I'm gonna open up to the public, but time is up. I'm making a motion to add, um, 10 more minutes to the subject. Can I have a second?
Second.
If we probably, probably moved in second, any objections, abstentions, discussion here and now in 10 more minutes are being added. It is A16. Please be aware that by, uh, by nine 30, I am gonna do a time check, uh, to see how we are with this agenda. And we might have to like, um, maybe move those things out of the way quickly. All right. Perfect. So, um, we do have a comment from Valerie. Valerie, do you want me to just read it?
Um, no, that's okay. I'll, I'll try to my voice. I'll be quick. Um, I just wanted to, to say I agree with, um, I mean, of these designs, I like the green the best and, and I like the, the idea that Jared had on the consistency with our other signs. But I do like being a community and being consistent with DC and Hyattsville, the way we are with our street names and numbers and things like that. And so, you know, but one of, the, the, the big thing for me is the font and downtown for me, the way it's written is difficult to read. And I don't have vision problems, but, um, we've converted over to a sans serif font in my work. Um, and the Mount Rainier, Maryland has serif and it makes it hard for visually impaired people. Especially to see. So not just drivers, but people who use like special software that reads words or people that have, have vision impairments. The nature center downward is, is fine. Um, but, but I would suggest getting rid of, of serif. As much as it hurts my heart, because I really like serif fonts. Over.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Valerie, from the 31st Street. Um, okay. So Nina, I have a message from you. Do you want to read or do you want me to read it?
Nina? I can be quick. Uh, yeah, I, I was actually involved in the wayfinding signs for Brentwood. So I think it is important to have distance to keep it simple, to keep it readable. I agree with what Valerie said. Um, I like the, the simple green and yellow and white. Um, and consistency within the town and to the extent that you can consistency with the other wayfinding signs. So thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah. And 28, 2900 block of Upper Street. Um, so yeah, so do be aware that Brentwood does have them. I know for a fact because they do mark when I'm driving around. Uh, I do know how far, uh, Thomas Stone is and that's how I know how it is because they do have signs posting towards, um, the direction Thomas Stone is and, and how far. All right. So I have, um, a list of it more. I know comment, just no need to speak. It will be a good idea to include, uh, places you need to Mount Rainier versus only places that every town has. The bike club, the food forest. Yeah, that's definitely, that's, that's very smart too. I love it. All right. Thank you, Elise. Um, let me see. And I have two Elise, Elise Moore and Elise Foster. Elise Foster from 3200 block of Perry. I like the green the best. I think it's the most, um, classic and stands up over time. Agree that top parts are hard to read. So we need to, um, so I think majority is going towards, uh, the green run. Um, and, uh, work on the font. So sheriff is out. Um, the downtown, we still would like it, just maybe a different font if maybe, but I mean, that was nice too. All right. And if we go add that distance to the locations, it definitely will help. I think that's like an over summary. And if you could like, um, let us know where exactly they're gonna be positioned, that definitely will help. I think you verbally told us, but if we could get it, um, in writing, it definitely will help us on, on what it, what it looks like. Because obviously the idea is to have people like go towards, you know, obviously we're riding up 34. And then we could think about as we're looking at the budget, if, you know, we decide to, um, you know, figure out what other areas we're gonna tackle or what grants we're gonna go after for, um, more, uh, wayfinding, um, signs. I, I know that in the past, uh, for Spring Park, there was an ability for us to get a grant that law for wayfinding signs. So maybe that could be one of those things that, um, we could, um, address. I will tell you this, and I, I have mentioned the city manager. Brentwood is very good at making sure, once we get our branding right, to have their logo on things. Um, their town seal that says like, you know, you're, you're entering Brentwood, you're exiting Brentwood. This is Brentwood, not Mount Rainier, right? But they have it in their trash, they have it in their science. Once we're able to like tackle our, um, what a branding will look like, it will definitely help also as we, we let people know where they're at, but also help them guide with that. All right. So moving on to the next item. Thank you, Melissa. It is A21. And so far we, we have, we need to go through this ones very quickly. All right. So, ooh, hold on, Melissa, you're moving it everywhere. There you go. Thank you. Item number five, presentation and discussion, third quarter financial report. Uh, the financial consultant, Ron Wilson, will present that third quarterly finance report to mayor and council. Big thank you, uh, Shirley as well for, um, from you, um, U Source as well. CEO founder, um, and mastermind behind a great company, uh, woman-led, uh, minority-led as well. I definitely like to point that out. Um, and they have worked with us with, uh, facade improvement. They're currently working us, uh, with Memory Park. All right. So Ron, uh, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, I'll just hit the highlights, uh, and then I'll answer any questions that anybody might have. Uh, this is the third quarter financial report. This is for the first nine months of the fiscal year. Um, some of our big revenue items, uh, line item 4100, real property tax. Um, based on, uh, what we've seen for April and May and June, uh, it looks like this will come in right about budget. Um, however, 4101, which is the vacant developed property tax, will be under budget for the year. Line item 4108, the shared state income tax, uh, looks like, uh, well, based on what we have for April and May, which is after this period. We don't have June in yet. Uh, we should be at or a little bit above the budget for the year. And then going down further to 46. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, 4506 speed camera revenue. Um, we, we have activity for April and May, which is after this period. And it looks like we will be slightly above budget for the speed camera revenue. Um, as we've talked about in the past, um, we are seeing a slowdown in this revenue source. So I think we have probably plateaued, uh, and won't see large increases in the future like we've seen in the past. Um, on the upside, uh, line item 4600, um, we are seeing significant, um, interest income this year. Uh, and that's because, uh, interest rates, uh, rose, um, significantly during the fiscal year. So that, that's a nice addition to our revenue. So those are the highlights on, on the revenue. Uh, stop right there, Melissa. So, so far this year, including grant income, uh, we have eight point, just under $8.3 million in revenue. On the expense side, um, we are going to be under budget for our salary expenses for the year. Um, uh, due to vacancies that we had throughout the year. Um, those vacancies are being filled, uh, so we won't see this kind of, um, uh, under budget, uh, in fiscal '24. Uh, other than that, uh, those are the highlights. So if we go down to the bottom, uh, including the grant expense, I think it's page, yeah, it's five pages down. Uh, for the first three quarters of the year, uh, including grants expenses, we have $6.6 million in expense. So most of the large revenue items, things like real estate taxes, income taxes, residential licenses and so forth, um, have largely been received. We, we are getting some revenue in the fourth quarter, but, but the big amounts have already. amounts have already come in the door uh and expenses for the first fourth quarter will be roughly in line with the previous quarter so that's where we stand right now.
Alright thank you Ron so I'm gonna go through the to the console um it is A twenty five precise and uh to the point Luke go ahead.
Thank you um thanks Ron for coming out and presenting all this is there any concern based on this information about how we projected the budget for FY twenty four and then um next question is um or just something to keep in mind if we do take more from reserves or the investment fund that we would see a then we would have maybe a a a bigger than usual decline in revenue from interest on that and just something for us all to keep in mind if we end up um but yeah.
Sure sorry I I didn't mean to talk over you um the in answer to your first question there's nothing right now that would lead me to think that the fiscal twenty four budget has any um any issues with it um a- and secondly yes if we use reserves uh then uh our our interest income would go down and at the same time it's it's I I put it the the chances are graver than fifty fifty that we will see interest rates come down a little bit uh I don't know when um I wouldn't expect uh much in the way of significant future increases so I I think that's a line item that could go down um and the chances of it going up are very very soon.
Luke did I address those both of your questions good alright Jared go ahead.
Yep uh thanks yep sorry about that thanks Ron um for coming in tonight I really appreciate it um can you just clarify um you mentioned uh we came short on the vacant property tax was that a projection based on uh thirty two hundred Rhode Island and or what what's the shortfall there?
Yeah I I I would have to research it to to talk about specific properties I I can tell you what happens often in this line item the this is given to us by uh the county when they they give us you know all of our assessed uh values and we we use that to build our budget um two things can happen one uh it is that a a property owner just might not pay the tax um what what's more common though i- is that uh an owner gets the property to be reassessed as occupied and and so they go down to the lower tax rate that that two dollar and fifty cent tax rate is an incentive
Yes.
To get people to get their buildings occupied that happens quite a lot.
Okay no that completely clarifies uh for me so thank you.
Okay.
Yeah Jared I was gonna say that because they're incentivized to like get them done and out of the list as soon as possible uh that's also some of the stuff that we had seen like um as an example this this the house down the street from me like two houses over they said uh the lots are vacant forever and a day once um they got sold and it hit like how much they were gonna pay oh they built a beautiful house that now you could see in the what's it called uh Wida um wish relief here now uh show it was there but that tells you right away like that wouldn't be in the vacant list and now it's like um in most towards uh residential property taxes so one way or another we get that money is less though more or less depending how big they build the property yeah.
Yeah and that clarifies for me and anyone else watching that we're we're not remiss in collecting it there's often some exten- extenuating circumstances or we are going to be able to collect it once they pay it and there's avenues to do that so thank you.
Right.
Perfect thank you thank you Jared Valerie.
Um yeah thank you um um I don't think I have any I mean I have questions I have a lot of questions um but I'm not going to I'm not going to bring them up right now thank you I will talk to you. Thanks.
Perfect thank you Valerie.
Um I do have a couple of questions there's two things that kind of concerned me these are the end of the third quarter budget correct our expenditures so this is.
Yes these these are third quarter absolutes.
Right okay so my concerns are with our legal service expenditures and the audit charge um I know that um for um the fiscal year twenty twenty four we have seventy five thousand budgeted and uh that's actually the budget from last year as well but as of the end of March we've expended over eighty two thousand so we're over seven thousand and we haven't even hit the third the fourth quarter yet um that's concerning um the other one is the audit charges where it was budgeted I'm assuming you I I wasn't here so I'm assuming you were a part of the budget process last year so um
Yes.
Okay so it was recommended that we allow thirty nine thousand for audits but now we're over almost ninety four thousand dollars over what was budgeted and that that's concerning um to answer those two things I mean and um
Sure.
Yeah.
So um with with regard to the legal expenses um a big chunk of that has to do with the FOP negotiations uh that we uh wrapped up uh I guess it was late winter um or real early spring uh those will not be recurring so um the the legal services um will come back down uh with regard to the audit charges what what ended up happening uh is that we we pay for multiple audit years uh in this fiscal year uh and that again will not be recurring we are caught up now on our audits so we will we will be paying for only one audit every year.
But didn't we know that coming into this year that there were gonna be multiple audits so my question is my 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 the 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 yellow flag so to speak um actually a red flag is that it was budgeted for thirty nine thousand if we knew there were multiple years it needed to be audited we didn't budget for them and that.
Yeah we we had multiple audits going on uh during that period of time when when we built the budget we weren't anticipating that they would leak into fiscal twenty three where we were expecting that the cost would be in fiscal twenty two um because this budget gets built so early um we we just didn't really have a good handle on the timing of when those costs were coming in
Okay.
But again those those won't recur uh in future years we're we're running a year now.
The other thing to point out very much Danielle before to to answer your question is that the team that did the audits along with our team they worked very hard to try to get us on track faster uh than we originally anticipated as well so some of those charges also were added upon because as they were finishing uh one audit they were moving forward with like you know doing track between two three years at the same time which allowed for us to be um ahead of the time because we were hoping to try to get it in by this year no later than next year but now we're all cut up uh out of this fiscal year that's to be honest if not some of this cost will be over to the other one but we're ahead of time so it costs us a little bit more upfront but it's costing us like um long run.
If I can finish my statement so essentially we were ahead of schedule and that's what we're paying for is being ahead of schedule and getting it all cut off.
Yep.
Perfect thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah the other thing to point out is for people that have not been watching the meetings is that um we also like change other firms right so we do have a new other firm and they're working with the process as well um that's something to uh to keep in mind and one of them was one one of them they finished and we're starting with a new firm as well so that's the reason why I wanted to make sure we got we got cut up as much as we possibly could with the former firm so that way they have they have left everything they need to be because they're no longer gonna be doing municipal audits and we were fortunate after at least one of the persons um that is theirs with a new firm so that way they do have a a hold of what Maranier is to move forward but that that's the reason why also um you know some of the numbers were off alright okay so I will go ahead and make it very quick on mine Jared if you need a second bite of it that's that's fine Jared uh Valerie did you you said you're gonna like have an individual talk so that's that's fine correct I just want to make sure I missed you um I will tell you uh Ron and Mr Kamali that I need you guys I need you guys to please move forward also now just giving us the quarterly statements I also need to make sure we do the monthly one I know during the audit we were receiving them and then we stopped receiving them but there's something that we importantly I think we need and also the department head so that way I I know that the the what's it called the committees have also requested so that way they know where they're at in the year in order to know what they need to expend but also for us to know how some of this um how some of these amounts are working out so I understand some of the bills coming later but even if we get it like the ten or fifteen of the following month so let's say that Marshall we could get in April fifteen as an example it will give us leave way in case we need we need to look into budget amendments and so on and figure out where we're at so I'm I'm gonna ask this a- again uh make sure that we're receiving monthly reports so that we could best assess where we are financially the other thing I'm gonna ask the team is um Ron thank you for saying that you don't see anything that per- particular based on Luke's question right that could address any change in the next upcoming year but like you know I know you guys are gonna be doing this because you guys like to keep eyes on pennies and dots and I appreciate you guys for that if by any chances that develops where you guys see there's gonna be a change please let us know so we immediately add it to the September meeting so that way uh we will have the first discussion for a budget amendment if need be okay so that'll be uh my uh my two cents for that but I please go move forward into doing monthly so that we're aware where we're at and if we need to do any changes we also um figure out what could be done alright okay so um let me see I see nothing from the public alright Jared do you uh Mr Kamali okay I'll see the focus uh go ahead Mr Kamali.
Alright thank you mayor I just wanted you know uh point something out that if Ron agrees to do that because the norm is to provide a quarterly report and it's gonna be tough on us to give you the monthly report because we don't get uh the the bank's statement until the tenth of the next month so I think we need more time and we never done it monthly even during the audit we were providing the quarterly report and Ron if you're comfortable with that I don't have any problem with that I just want to make.
I yeah I you know I think this is uh you know timing and 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 what goes into closing uh on a monthly basis I I I can provide information to the council and um we we can I think come to uh an arrangement that works for everybody um uh but I think that's sort of a longer discussion um I mean we we wanna you know provide the information to the council that they need um so I think that uh that's a follow-up item um and and I can um provide some information that.
That's fine but I'll tell you this uh both uh Demornay and Nicole were giving us monthly statements so this is not out of the norm for us receiving we were receiving them prior and allows to us to be able to figure out what to do and not to do uh Mr Kamali this before you were city manager so I could tell you what.
No I just wanna mayor mayor with with all due respect uh when Nicole Nicole was hired by me and Nicole was my employee so we never provided any monthly report please and uh I was the director of Public Works and we would receive quarterly report by Demornay and everybody so but again I'll leave it up to Ron because Ron has to do it and that's gonna be a lot of work and I do appreciate everybody's everybody's you know patient but we will provide quarterly report to mayor and council.
So Mr Kamali please add this item to the September agenda because at the end of the day it's council's decision whether or not they want this report to be done and if we just like cohesively for the to move forward with this that's what's gonna take place that's just basically the way it works so the way I see it is like I know committees department directors as well as like council has repeatedly asked for this so this is not something that is a me ask this is something like other members of council have also requested and it was happening right we understand it cannot be done the first ten days because the documents are coming forward that's what I was willing to say like you know the fifteen I'm fine with it or the twenty that's fine but seeing reports like you know four months into it um it does very little for me if I have to like deal with a situation that that is going on uh with a report that you're giving us in front that is for March and we're in June so that's like March April May June that is three months late at this point you guys are already working in the new quarterly report you know so that that's kind of what we're asking to at least be in in the loop a little bit closer so what would.
Mayor mayor please.
To discuss.
Oh please uh we we have been working with the budget FY twenty four for past six months that's the only reason this report is late and I've been talking to Ron and I've asked him to provide the quarterly report on time to mayor and council so we've been involved with the budget so for past six months.
So I would say it's gonna go into September agenda Mr Kamali for discussion and that's where where it's at and if mayor and council decide that this is something we need to move forward this is where we need to go okay alright so council if you guys don't have any other questions we'll move over to the next item because I've seen nothing from the community right now we're good council alright because it is eight forty one PM Jared do you have your hand up for something or you're good alright alright perfect moving on to the next item discussion on Spring Park uh the mayor council ensure consensus exists to direct staff to work investigating the spring both to reality and deal with the standing water issue over the course of the summer so they can have a cost estimate on both fronts delivered to mayor council when they return to session for the fall uh Luke do you put this on here or who put it Jared Luke which of you guys or Valerie?
I think Danielle may have put it on there I don't.
Oh no Danielle didn't put it on there but she was glad to see it.
No.
That was requested no that was requested by Luke a long time ago to have this one and I think Jared had emailed also wanted to get an update that's why I have Rosio tonight here to give an update to mayor and council on the spring.
Alright so I'm sorry so Rosio the floor is yours thank you Mr Kamali go ahead. Rosio.
Yes good evening mayor and council.
Good evening.
I'm sorry I'm a little under the weather so my voice is cracking a little bit um yes just wanted to follow up with an update on Spring Park I know um this is gonna be an ongoing discussion just wanna let you know we did have the privilege of um connecting with one of our residents who shared um a contact information for an engineering group um I did reach out to them last week and unfortunately is not something you know within their scope of work that they can do on regards to working on Spring Park but they did lead me to um another good group um they're called Hillis Carnes Engineering Association um I spoke to Greg McIsaac from that association he's um an environmentalist um that works for the engineering association and he's going to be um helping me um see what route we need to you know go with with you know in regards to this park um I sent him some you know all the information we have last week um I sent him the force that we've done um so he is gonna be looking into it with his group and seeing what opportunities we may have um so hopefully we have an opportunity with to meet with him very soon um but as far as any like updates um that's all pretty much where we're at right now so hopefully you know we don't have any more roadblocks and we'll be able to proceed from here moving on.
Thank you so much and I think this item was brought up because uh from our last conversation the residents assumed that we were not gonna be doing nothing it just meant that we were gonna be working at Rogers Park while like Spring Park was still in the investigation process and to point out very clearly uh both Rosio and Kamali said that they're not working on it they're heavily working on it but they have it like you know roadblock after roadblock after roadblock and eventually the council's gonna have to decide what they're planning to do with the spring because if it cannot be assessed and nothing can do move forward with right either we continue looking for more information and add more time with it or B decide to um look at what the other alternatives are other alternatives include you know put a sign that says this was the former location of XYZ and we're gonna address the water still as Y as an example right nothing has been decided you know to point that out but if um because I I'm hearing various conflicting messages around some people think we're gonna turn into a water fountain where people could go over and drink water um I'm not sure where that came from there is something else I know Danielle shaking her head uh somebody else said like they thought we were gonna uh recreate the well um they but there are two portions so two different kinds of well like the original one and um one that happened after they're there right um the other one is a a big ask when it comes for water not to be still. Um, the other one is, uh, a big ask when it comes for water not to be still there. Um, and be able to come back the leaves that go on it, that back up the tube. So it's like all over the place right now. So I think that that's the, the portion where the staff does this a little bit of caring. So I'm receiving, like I said, Kamali, I've been working really hard trying to get this information and we to thank, uh, Mark. I did run into Mark a couple of times and I did say, please provide the information to our team so we could look afterwards. But it has definitely not been a lack of trying to see if somebody could do something, um, regarding the, the park and what needs to be there. I know Danielle looks like she's ready to like go do water fountain like, you know, on it, but. All right. So I'm gonna open it up to Council. I'm gonna start with word two because it is in the word, I'm gonna move to word one. Uh, Valerie, Jared, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Rosio, for continuing to pursue this and work on it. I know it's a, it's been a tough, tough road, but, um, a, um, I know that you're working hard on it. So thank you for doing that. I don't have any questions or comments other than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Yep. Rosio, I just wanna thank you for your, uh, endurance and patience on this. I know it's, uh, it's been a challenging road and I know the specific small size of this park and the uniqueness of it has made it challenging to find contractors or folks that can help with the design. So I just wanna, um, we wanna, wanna say that I appreciate your past work on this, appreciate, appreciate your continued efforts on this. Um, you know, we do have scarce, uh, scarce kind of pub, we have very few public, uh, um, sort of pu- public city-owned parks and parcels in town. So I, I think it is, you know, it's very important to make this accessible. It's also important to get it right. So, um, appreciate the thoroughness and the, um, continued efforts you're, um, you're, uh, you're, um, you're carrying on, uh, so far. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, Danielle, Luke?
Um, Rosio, you know, I'm appreciative. You know, this is like one of my pet things. I wanna see Spring Park, um, polished for the gem that it really is. It's one of the, one of our interior, um, parks here in the community and, um, I really appreciate every effort that you're putting into it. Um, I do wanna go on the record and say that I think we need to look into the Clemson Trust and see if we can't find some kind of like, uh, connection since that was originally the Clemson, um, estate, um, pump water source. So that might be one avenue. We can look as far as funding gets concerned. Um, but again, thank you so, so much. And no, I don't wanna see it turn into a water fountain where people can just go up and, and get water. I, I, people lining up to it, but that's why I was laughing. But anyway, thank you so much, Rosio.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Luke, go ahead.
I would love to see it as an actual spring where you could collect water from. That would be amazing. We would, we would future-proof our city. We would have, we would be self-sustainable. That's what you need is water. Um, and no, I mean, I think that would be cool if there could be a water feature there, maybe just like a water fountain or something. Um, like they have at the, um, the, uh, um, the spring on the Capitol. They have a little grotto there with the, with the water fountains and that looks really cool. Um, but no, uh, Rosio, just thank you for doing all this work. Um, I just really appreciate y'all. Um, just let us know. Keep letting us know progress. Um, and, and what's going on because I think, you know, if it turns out we just can't do anything with it other than maybe get rid of the standing water, um, then we, we, we can go to residents and start, start doing something with that part to make it a more useful space. Um, and I will look, I'm gonna CC Brian Nedler on an email to you to get me, to get you all the historic information about that park. Cause I know I owe you that. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get you that information because there might be some cool pictures there. Um, so I will get that to you, um, and I'll, I'll Brian get that to you and then we'll go forward from there because that might help you in your conversations with these engineers, just telling them how the historical component of that, that might, you know, these engineering firms like good press. So if they can work on something that would have good press and that would be a, that would be what I would use to like sound like, look, this is a big historic prog- project. We can get a lot of good press from this. And if you were involved with this, that good press comes your way as well. That just might be something that entices them. Um, the history of it being all the way from the like Clemson University, that, that, that Clemson, um, that big money and that big mansion that was there at one point in time, you know, that's, that's kind of a cool thing. So, um, I'll, Brian, get you that stuff and then we can go from there.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you so much. And if thousands worse, please, please let us know. That's still not working. Okay? So even if we put all that juice and sauce on it, they still go eh, no, next. That's okay. Let us know as well that that's not working. But, um, I know it's definitely like, you know, uh, I, I think Jared hit it in the nail and says like, um, the particulars of the park is not, you know, it's, it's very hard to sell it and stuff like that. And like I say, we need to figure out what to do with it. And at certain point, Council, we definitely need to like draw the line and said, okay, we're not gonna be having our staff going four years looking into a spring, uh, modification that is not gonna happen. If that's what we decide to, right? Or if we decide to say, okay, we're gonna put that, we already like, you know, exhaust every avenue we could at this point, put that in pause. And we're looking at, on forward to is like X, Y, and Z. I'm not even gonna say it a lot because I don't want like to, to judge any, um, to, to put any thoughts out there and then be, be accused of like, you know, um, maneuvering the poor park. But in saying that, I will tell you that, um, at certain point, we are definitely gonna tell the staff, you know, we're gonna have to tell the staff, you know, Rosio and Kamali, like, you know, we're gonna put a pause on that and this is the community conversations we're gonna have. And let's figure out what else can we do in the, in the park if that is not a solution. And even if it's a start, it's like, you know, the, the way fine sign that says like, this is the name of the park. I mean, that's a good start. And then move forward to whatever it is. But, um, you know, I don't, I don't wanna feel that this is the, gonna be Rosio's homework for the rest of her life in Mount Rainier. We might, you know, you know what I'm saying? Uh, so be, be very aware of that because we do have, um, she has a thousand things to do. And the list of projects are very big aside from her, um, day-to-day stuff to do. So at certain point, Council, I am gonna project the day for us to be like, if at this point, we have not figured out what to do with that spring to put a pause on that particularly part of it. But, um, if we're gonna be asking Rosio for the next two years, like about a water spring situation. And that's what you guys want? That's fine. But, um, I assure you that Rosio also has other stuff that she could be working on when it comes to that park and other parks, or if you guys wanna activate the space, um, what it looks like, right? If we wanna exhaust, if you guys wanna put a beautiful sign that says it, that says, this is the history of this well and this is why it was so important and great and dandy and stuff like that. There's something to address the historical context of it, right? Be aware of that, but I wanna make sure that certain point, Council, um, we, um, we also put, um, a timeline that says like, okay, this is like, this is for the next X time. And then from there on, we're gonna move on to something to, to that if we wanna activate it, what's it gonna look like if that piece is no long, it's no longer part of it. But it's been more than a year just trying to solve this spring. And prior to that, I know that we're trying to solve it as well. So this is not something that we've been having conversations for the last month, two, three, four, six months. It's definitely longer than that. Um, so if the point of it is to activate that space, we might have to put that, um, aside if we have no answer for it. And then figure out, go back to community and figure out what is it that we wanna do in that, um, in order to activate that space. Okay? Just good for thought and, uh, but do keep that in mind, uh, because if not, it's gonna be that forever hunt for the spring and nothing will get done in that space except for that forever hunt. Okay? Hopefully we could find something, but if not, um, just make sure it's clear. All right, Hillary, do you want me to read your comment? You got it or where are you? Hillary, Borga, Terry Three Hundred Blocker Shepherd?
Sure. Um, thanks, thanks for the opportunity to weigh in. Just that we're watching this space closely. So thank you so much for the update. We appreciate it. We appreciate all of your work on it. Um, uh, just as an aside, the original grant on this, um, from years ago did reference using the spring as a water source, both for people and dogs, which is interesting. Um, so that's probably why you're getting questions about it. That isn't something that we're advocating for necessarily, but, um, that's probably the background. Thanks.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. And I think that's why we also have them a lot of the meetings and do me a favor, Rosio and Melissa, I want you guys to start numbering down what meeting, what conversation numbers for Spring Park. Just like we do with ARPA. So that way, when we do get questioned about, we haven't had those conversations, we could definitely pinpoint a conversation number X that we've had, like, you know, ARPA, we're like a number like thirty-something or whatever it is, right? But that would help the, the community to know that we've been having these conversations consistently and what it looks like. So during the summer, if you guys could backtrack to figure out what number conversation this is, so that way next time we have it is, is, is put on there. I definitely will also appreciate it. So that way they know that, um, that how do you call it? And, um, Mr. Kamali, for, for the website, just put like, you know, that, um, we're still looking for that and it was last presented in this meeting. So that way, like if somebody, one of the residents ask about it, they see that it was, they're welcome to review the tape, even if the answer is, you know, that outlet that was given to us, um, did not work, but this is like the new outlet that we're going for. Okay? All right, Rosio, thank you so much to you and your team, um, for working on this. I know Kamali was working it when he was Public Works Director. I know you were working when you were a mistress and now you are director. So, um, he passed on Spring Park and is responsible to start bestone upon you, right? For like over, uh, close to a year now. Um, all right, perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Try to do something.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item. Uh, this is Valerie's presentation discussion on home-based repair program. Council very well will present a proposal at the home-based repair program. Valerie, the floor is yours. Time check is eight fifty-six P M. All right, go on.
Cool. So thank you. Um, thank you for taking some time on this. So we had allocated a hundred and fifty thousand through ARPA funds in FY twenty-four's budget um, for a home repair program. Um, and so just some background on this. Um, we have about a thousand one hundred sixty housing units that are not, um, apartment units. Um, many of them were, um, built, the median, I'm sorry, the median year houses were built was about nineteen fifty-one, but many of them have been built before nineteen thirty-nine. Um, and just a few have been built in the last fifteen years. So in short, the housing stock is aging and the housing stock should be maintained and invested in. Um, I ran some numbers, homeowners generally fall in the thirty to fifty age range. Um, um, and the general household income is roughly seventy thousand dollars, although citywide it's, um, and according to the census bureau, it's about fifty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars. Um, we have a lot of long-term residents and we also have a lot of new residents. Um, and so buying a home and maintaining a home is really important. Um, and, you know, it's a good way to build wealth. It's also a good way, um, to make sure that, um, you know, our, our housing stock is, is well maintained and cared for, for, um, you know, well into the future. So that's part of why we wanted to create this, uh, program. Um, so I put it together. I've worked with the city manager, Mr. Kamali, and, um, the ARPA consultant to put together, um, like a draft application, um, and, and forms for that. Um, so right now, the, the household eligibility would be that you have to be a homeowner and the city's legal limits. Um, you have to occupy the home. The intention would be to maintain or remain in the home for a period of three years post-construction or work. Um, you know, provide proof of homeownership and current homeowner's insurance coverage, have a demonstrable need for improvements and repairs. Um, and then you can see the household income limits. Um, I had originally proposed this at one hundred and ten percent of the median family income. But because it's ARPA funds and we're using treasury rules, we have to, to use those rules for this. Um, ideally in the future, if we could find some pocket of funding that would allow some people just over these limits to be able to access it, I think that'd be helpful because um, the DC median fa- family income is like a hundred forty-two thousand five hundred or something like that, um, and at the hundred percent level. So, um, but these are the income limits, um, that we would be using. Um, eligible prod, uh, projects for improvements and repairs, repairs would be both um, external and internal work, um, because just as much as, you know, fixing your, um, your porch is, is important so it doesn't fall down, um, you know, having, having up-to-date, um, kitchens, bathrooms, floors and things like that is also quite important, important. Um, so this is a draft. I, I will send it around to city council for your input and thoughts. Um, I'm proposing a, a maximum of seventy-five hundred per um, grant per household. Um, and that, so if you have a hundred and fifty thousand, that would, the first round of this, um, would allow for about twenty households. If, if they're all using the maximum of seventy-five hundred to access these funds. Um, um, of course, some improvements that might not be as much, um, as seventy-five hundred and so they could request less. Um, and then I, um, I did put together kind of a, a list of, you know, reports that the city manager could provide to city council on how the program's going. Um, and all of that will be sent to you all by email, um, tonight or tomorrow morning for your review and, um, look at this. So I'll stop there. I don't know if anybody has specific questions right now, but that's the general gist of this.
Thank you, Valerie. Um, so when Valerie says that, I'll just as a point of information, send it to her directly with the edits. Don't hear reply all because of document that we're gonna address. So make sure you guys take care of that because if not, we'll get ourselves in horrible violation and I'm not like dealing with you guys and, um, higher attorney fees continue to pile up because of, um, doing things like that. All right. So Jared, I'm gonna stick with word two. Go ahead.
Yep. No, thank you, Valerie. Um, I really like this, uh, approach you've taken. Um, yeah, when we talked about this, I think one thing I just wanted to make sure was uh, benefits flow to, uh, low and moderate income households that were not, you know, I've, I've, this is actually one of my frustrations, uh, you know, with the county's rain check program. And it's been a great program for building stormwater infrastructure, but the benefits have actually almost uniformly, and I've talked to their staff about this, have uniformly flowed to the, uh, most well-off folks because of the way it's been structured and actually because it's reimbursable. So I, um, yeah, I would, uh, so I, I, I really like this, this, uh, approach that's targeted, um, to low and moderate income households in our city. We've been able to do a lot for, um, uh, renters through, uh, both our rent stabilization ordinance in the counties. And this is something we can do for low, moderate income, long-term households. So, um, I think the, uh, actually the only couple of questions I had, actually, can you scroll back up to the, or Melissa, can you scroll back to the previous page? Um, let's see. Do you have a sense, you or Mr. Kamali, how we would?
Yeah, I, I agree with the, you know, staying in the home for three years. Um, what, what, how would we, how would we enforce that?
Um, so I think, I mean, Mr. Kamali could probably answer too, but just as a, um, each, um, if you were, if you put in a application for this, you would then sign a grant agreement that would stipulate, but that's a, that's a requirement. Um, I don't think it's quite as enforceable as you'd want it to be, um, but based on without a lien on the property, but I also don't wanna put a lien on the property for maintenance and repairs at this point, if we don't have to.
Yeah, no, I, 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 yeah, and I, I think that's, that makes sense. Um, the, um, yeah, and I, I, I think the would, one thing I would encourage is just if we do this, that we, i- if there's a way to, because this was like issue with the rain check program, if there's a way to make the funds available before they start the project, because one of the biggest challenges for households with a lot of these programs is having to do it on a reimbursable basis and often the money, the, the upfront cost is almost one of the, one of the, uh, barriers to making it happen.
Yeah, I, I think that's something we still have to work through, um, right now. But that's, I mean, ideally, we'll, you know, work on this program through the summer. Um, our staff will get up all their stuff that they need to make sure that, you know, in September, they could launch it with all, all, everything being robust and done. So they don't have to worry about um, coming back to us with questions. But I, I agree with that as well. I mean, I think especially with the repairs and maintenance, people wanna deposit and then they wanna, they want their money right away afterwards. It's, it's a little bit challenging for, for people making less, um, to do that. So I think that's something we should look at and work through. Okay.
At least Jared, at least we could, we could release a portion of the seventy-five hundred. Cause we wanna make sure that the work is done and we have to inspect the final work, final completion. And, uh, we could have a portion as a, you know, advanced payment.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, I think that, yeah, yeah, I know, I know. And the program design on anything like this is very complicated and I wanna, you know, not, not pepper you with questions, just really like the idea, the approach, the thoroughness you both have put into this. Um, appreciate you doing the heavy lift on it. And, uh, I appreciate, yeah, yeah. Not, not a criticism at all, just, uh, putting some thoughts out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, like, under three minutes. Um, all right, Luke, Danielle, go.
Uh, just Valerie, thank you so much for putting the time and energy into this. Um, I just think this is a great program and, and I'm excited to see it come into action. Um, appreciate everyone else's questions and I think we can iron out a lot of the, those details, but look forward to pushing this through. Thank you.
All right, Danielle?
Um, yeah, thanks so much, um, for putting this together. I know a lot of people in the community will be, um, very grateful to see something like this available for them. I'm sure I'll have just a couple of just like basic, you know, information questions, but I'll reserve that just for a conversation between the two of us or emails. But thank you again very much.
All right, thank you. So this is my fast. Thank you so much for putting this together at the same time, Kate. I think for hospital ability, I think we need to put that it's a one time application, right? They can only get to apply one time. It's not clear right there. The other thing is like if we could put checkboxes, whether they have applied to programs like Christmas in April, the county, like, you know. Home help program, right? So that way, if they haven't, we also encourage them to apply to that as well. Because seven thousand five hundred sounds like a lot of money, but when you come to repair, it might not be enough. So they might need a couple of other items or a couple of other help from the county. But also other programs, including Christmas in April, right, to be able to subsidize some of the extra things that they might need. I do agree that it could be some money upfront, right? And then the rest of the money on it, have them sign documents, Estela, because. My fear is that you'll have somebody that might be low income on it and then how do you call it? They might be at the end just to like flip it and go, right? And then how are we invested into that basically will allow for the next person not to come in and have a reasonable price house? But not put a situation that the next person is gonna pay a lot of money for something that the taxpayers went ahead and paid. I noticed right here is tree removal and bamboo. We do have a hundred thousand dollars that we use as a city to be able to do some stuff, so I want to make sure that. It doesn't become, how do you call it, the tree removal application instead of helping with homes? So maybe you guys need to reconsider like, you know, if there's gonna be a cap of how many of those you're gonna do. In comparison to other other repairs, because I would hate to have. A bunch of tree removals and that's all the funding that all the money went for. And tree removal is not cheap. Kamali, about how much is it for tree removals or stump removals? All right.
But Mayor, just, you know, want to point out something, this is, this is a private tree. The money that we do, it's a public tree, so we have a removal for the public tree. And the private, it's on the owner. So but it's very, very expensive.
I agree, but I definitely don't will not want all the applications to come in forward just for tree removals. That's I guess what I'm saying, right? So consider that also, if you see most of them are coming that way, because it might be the true removal like grant instead of that homeowner. Fertilization grant, right? But I definitely will feel like if you guys put boxes to see if the people apply for Christmas in April and the county help for homes, right? At the minute, they could sign up, they checked it or not, and see if we could like, you know, maybe our social service coordinator could help them fill that application. So that way they could expand their dollars and figure out what else the county has to be able to help them out. All right. For the email address, I think that that's a city manager decision who he wants those emails to go to. As he has in the past. So Kamali, you figure that one out, because you guys are gonna be responsible for collecting that.
Well, good.
Okay.
That goes to the city clerk for your information.
Melissa's like, oh.
She's been, she's been working with me on the ARPA fund, so that's another project.
Yeah, I definitely know. That's what I say. You you figure out from Melissa's Melissa. All right. So those are gonna be my five cents right now, Valerie. I'll go through the application to help you out, because I know I helped out with the ARPA application to figure out what. Was some of those barriers we had and some of them we were able to fix before the application went out. In order to make this a little bit smoother, but have fun working on it through the summer. All right. If anybody from, thank you, Valerie, for your efforts on this as well. So if anybody from the public has something to add, let us know. I hear nothing. All right, so move on to the next item.
There is a comment.
On Facebook?
On the chat.
Oh, sorry, Val Valerie, you haven't, you're hanging out with us tonight, right? Valerie Salinski, thirty first block. Go ahead.
I'm waiting for number nine to come up, that's why.
I was like, wow, you're hanging out with us for reals. Go on.
I I I had completely dis disconnected this from the ARPA stuff. But I was thinking like in the future, it would actually, it would be great if this became a sustainable program. And didn't have the the same income limits, because some even even if people make more. Some of these houses need so much and it's significant enough that. Even people that make what people consider to be decent still can't afford it. But to have it be something like a low interest loan. And so that way the loan being paid back with the extra interest could then increase the amount in the bank, also earning interest. On a fund that would then grow to be able to help others to maintain. The houses for the community to have, you know, the kind of houses that we all kind of image it in our minds to have. But anyway, that's down the road and and I wasn't thinking about it being ARPA or COVID related or anything like that, just in a general vacuum.
Thank you so much, Valerie. I know something that I know High School is doing is something that I'm thinking of, especially with. Depending where the restability like lands, right? What they're utilizing the funding that they collect, the proposal right now is potentially some of that extra money, if any extra money comes through. To be able to help when it comes to some of the apartment or some of the home rental units in order to create a program to be able to. Help residents of, you know, I guess in this case could be like low income, but. That's a good point to like put forward to and figure out this is something we want to do as a city. All right, cool. All right, no one else? Just randomly? Okay, so move on to the next item. All right, thank you, Valerie, for that, and I will look forward to the document to to put suggestions, if any. All right, discussion on parking in the city. The American Council will have discussion of parking in the city. This is fifteen minutes. It is nine twelve. Jared, this was your item on the agenda, correct? Go ahead.
It it would, and Melissa, sorry, I I just realized I probably could have given you a better title on this, so. Basically, the the reason and I just brought this up for discussion. I don't have an item, but. I don't have a action, action discussion, but. In in twenty thirteen, the city, yeah, the city did this Mount Rainier mixed use town center parking study technical report. And it looked at the existing parking conditions in the city, parking availability, meter usage. U- usage and utilization and also, you know, both time of day and and duration of time and. It looked at, yep, thank you, and it looked at. Basically, just kind of a a survey of what was. And what was available, both private and with on street, pub, on street parking metered, off street. Public lots and then off street private lots. And and so the reason, the reason I was bringing this up is, you know, we're starting relative to twenty thirteen. You know, we're, we're starting to have, we've always had a kind of a regional draw on thirty fourth. We're starting to have a. You know, heavy demand, especially around the. The Singer Building with folks coming in there. We have, you know. You know, proposed the jazz club or jazz venue that. Miss Jody Wildy proposed. And I just wanted to kind of put, put this out there and I really would just like people's, like the rest of, hear the sense of council. On, you know, do we, do we need to revisit this? You know, do we need to? I know Luke, in particular, you've mentioned the. Possibility of, you know, the negotiating with some venues like. Churches that, you know, have quite a bit of parking, but it's very peaked on days when others don't, when other folks. When when most of the demand is, you know, it's a big on Sunday and then often not in the rest of the week. So. That was, that was basically it. You know, it's that cert, that study, which is a very kind of small survey and study. Was almost eleven years old now. And yeah, that's where I was, where I was gonna leave it.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Luke, since you were mentioned, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I I would just say, you know, I haven't thought a lot about this. Except for the pieces of just like getting more parking for our downtown. So I mean, my my priority would be just kind of at the tactical level. On Thirty Fourth Street, that parking lot that is across the street from the church. I know Ron has had some conversations with the church there. They use that for overflow. The church is interested in some sort of partnership. I don't know where those conversations are. I I hope those conversations continue or at least get kickstarted again. So that we could figure out how we could use that as parking. And then the downtown area on Rhode Island, I think, you know, I would just like to get sort of super tactical on what we could do there. I think that some of that will get done with the study we're gonna do with G W in the fall. As they think through development of that corridor and what needs to get done. So, you know, maybe this is something that we save until, you know, that project in the fall is done. And then maybe there are some recommend, maybe, you know, this study here could get, you know, sent to them and they could sort of incorporate it into. What they think are some things that we need to develop along Rhode Island. So that's sort of. My thoughts on it now, but appreciate you bring this up and I'm open to 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 going into it in more detail and. And opening up for a study sooner rather than later. That would just be kind of my suggestions. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely think we need to do another study at some point in the soon to near future. Of this area, but also of other areas around the city and maybe even citywide, just to look at parking. I know we did traffic, but parking is another challenge in many areas. And I think, Luke, I'm looking forward to seeing what the G W students come up with, but this is, you know, ten years old at this point. And. And. You know, the the level of parking is just different than it was ten years ago. So I think, I think we do need to look at this and I'm interested, is it? As a council member to look in this as well. And I know there's a lot of opportunities. There's the University of Maryland has students that need projects. There's, you know, other potential opportunities to engage on this as well, so. Definitely look forward to having a further conversation on on parking, especially in our business districts, but also, you know, around town as well.
Okay, Danielle.
I honestly thought this was a part of the program that Luke was bringing to us with G W when I first saw it. I I agree that we. That that there's some, that we definitely need to look into the parking situation more. I do I do think that. Partnering with businesses and churches, especially in the business area. I mean, even the church here at the bottom of Shepherd and Thirty Fourth, you know, because that's close to. The business strip there, Thirty Fourth and Bunker Hill, to expand parking. And I am, I'm looking very much into hearing what the group from G W is going to report. In the fall, what we're going to be able to do with them. I think that this, Jared, just shows that there's, there's a lot of commitment to trying to find more parking. And I'm very optimistic going forward with whatever program we end up using. Thank you for bringing this up for discussion.
All right, thank you, guys. I'll make it brief. Luke, yeah, send them the parking study. So that way, more or less, they could figure out what it was ten years ago. But I mean, it's definitely interesting to see like, you know, what has been accomplished in those ten years. To figure out if any happened with the study, because we usually have a lot of studies and. Some of them developed, some of them are archived, some of them for financial reasons, so X, Y, and Z. I'm not gonna sit here, I'm not sitting here blaming. Any council for whatever happened prior to us, right? But for various reasons, some of them have not been able to follow through technology, X, Y, Z, right? If we could figure out what the study looked like, we haven't, how far, if anything, has been advanced from that study. Right? And yeah, so this is sent to G W as part of the things that they're gonna be looking at. And I think also like thinking about parking study would be also great for them to work with our police department. Since we do have a parking enforcement team and they could more or less be able to gather some of the data when it comes to parking. Citations and so on and so on to help the team from G W to to determine if. What are areas that are more hot than others and also obviously working with. With some of some of our groups to figure out like if they'll release some parking, some of them have said yes, some of them are like. They would do it for events, especially things, but not necessarily like. Every Saturday or Sunday, that's something that they were very adamant about. But that's some of them, but I don't know if this, where they are right now, because that's at least the last conversation I had with them. Jared, I see you twice and one of them you have your hands up and the other one you're in screen. Which one is it? Stoffus?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, my computer, my computer's having trouble with the microphone, so I'm also on my phone, sorry. No, I just wanted to say that's, I think that's exactly, that's perfect. I I think having the G W book take a look at this, this study was very. Good, it was very thorough, but it's a survey. It was really light on the recommendations and conclusions. It basically had a paragraph for like each recommendation and that, so it gives a great survey. I mean, it's really, really complete, but it doesn't tell us where to go. And Luke, I think for the G W students, that'd be a great next step. And I'm just a really big fan of us, you know, looking again. Like at this holistically, you know, so we don't end up, we end up playing whack a mole a lot based on kind of. You know, we do one thing, one place, because folks are reaching out and then it pushes this thing somewhere else. And we really need to be able to have a study that we can, that's technical, it's objective, that we can. Look at like, you know, the impacts of what we do where and how it how it plays out. So thank you. Appreciate it, folks.
So much. The other thing is like to add, I know sometimes like, you know, they want residential parking. The problem that we had is like when ferry comes around, everybody forgets they're supposed to pay their residential parking. And at one time, we had one street that two people have paid their essential parking. Everybody else in the block shop got inside it, right? Because none of them have paid. Parking pass. And this is something that we keep telling them, right? This is something that you guys requested, so therefore you guys should be the first ones in line and paying your parking pass. Because you literally asked for this added charge on behalf of it, right? So we need to make sure that at all times that if this is something yet, I know the application, we have, I know I personally have asked for it to be. Included on it, because we have some residents in some of the parking locations in the city that signed the petition, they were in support and somehow, some way, they didn't realize there is. A fee associated with it, or the fact that the car needs to be registered to the home that it belongs. Or the fact there's only two parking passes that are allowed to it. And they became a bit frustrated and they made more or less than like, had they known that. The car had to be registered to the home, they wouldn't have, you know, joined together and signed. Or be that if they will have known that they only have two parking passes for four vehicles, right? That's something they wouldn't have done, but the reality is like, if people are not, you know, if those that have driveway are not putting their cars in the driveway. And they have four vehicles, you're gonna continue having extra cars in the street. Like one of the streets we run license plates, remember this, Mr. Kamali, one of the streets we run the plates with P D. And now we P D wrote him and then we got, we got the information. Every car in both blocks was for a resident that lived in that block. So we were like, you guys could do parking passes, but if we continue to have cars not parking driveways, right, as an example. It's not gonna stop, because they were like, see all these cars, and then we run it. And it belonged to those homes themselves. So there was that. And that, one of the times we ran, there was not even one car that was like a random outside the city person, all in belong to those homes. So. That gives you an example how sometimes like perception and reality might be different. And and sometimes trying to solve the problem. Might seem like that that's the right way to go about it and it might not be the case. All right. So that's me. I have a Sharnette, are you gonna speak or are you going to? Are you gonna speak about the subject or do you want me to just read this?
No.
Your name, last name?
My name is Sharnette Robinson, thirty five, Papa Perry. Are you ready for me?
Go ahead.
Okay, so let me just say, since. The different eateries have opened up, our parking has increased over here. And the minute they move those residential parking signs, we're gonna go right back to people parking here for eight hours a day while they. Go to work or take the bus or whatever into DC. It happens every single time and we fought for residential parking. The one thing that I want to say, when I moved to Mount Rainier, the police department enforced. Oh, what do you call it? When you move into it, after thirty days, you're supposed to have your vehicle registered. Well, you do have an unusual amount of vehicles. In Mount Rainier that are not registered to the homes. And nobody's enforcing it. And it's been brought up repeatedly. So when people find out, well, I don't have to register my car and nobody's gonna ticket me, they're not really enforcing the residential parking. So in addition to when the city sends out something, I make it a point to go around and tell residents, you guys need to go and do this or we're gonna lose our parking over here. So I'm just asking that they take it into consideration when you, when you remove. So I'm just asking that they take it into consideration when you, when you remove the, uh, residential parking, that, residents on this block have an opportunity to meet with council and voice their concerns about it, because, I, I think that it's only fair, whenever they do the study or what have you, that we have an opportunity to weigh in. And I've talked, we, Jody, uh, while we talk with a lot of the residents over here about the parking situation, and we all know that once the club opens, that, you know, it's, she's out at Howard University. We're almost certain that a lot of the, uh, clientele or whatever, may come over to this location and for what she has planned. So I'm just asking for some consideration with that, as well as, uh, commuters, and everybody else that will be parking over on Perry Street. And I understand the municipal building over here, that you guys need parking for people that are coming in and out of that building. They, I mean, I see them stop all the time, and they don't know whether they should go in or not, or leave their vehicle if they're gonna be ticketed. So, you know, if it comes down to it, do it like it was years ago. There was just residential parking on one side of the street. The other side of the street was left open, but there was residential on one side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And just to point of clarity, nobody has discussed or talked about removing any residential parking. We're just addressing is, if we wanna like, you know, tackle, uh, when it comes to like the parking situation, and the city as a whole. So, um, just to clarify, nobody is like, advocating brought up or even, uh, mentioned removing any residential parking that currently is in the city. All right, so, moving on to the next item, because I, I see nothing else here. It is 9:27. Uh, we have, um, discussion on stop sign camera pilot program in Mount Rainier. So I assume Chief is here, correct? Chief, I see you. How are you, Chief?
I'm fine, Mayor.
Can you, can you do us a little rundown on what exactly are stop cameras, um, stop sign cameras, and what we wanted for a pilot program? And, um, why is it that most people don't have, um, speeding citation cameras on the stop signs, because that's brought up a lot?
Okay, Mayor. Uh, good evening to Mayor and Council. Um, I'm just gonna be brief. Uh, this was brought to my attention by our consultant from, uh, Greenwill. Uh, we know that, this item came up this year's legislative session and it failed. Uh, one of the reasons it failed was, uh, because it had been those studies, in the state of Maryland pertaining to stop sign enforcement cameras. Currently, these cameras are only used in Washington DC. They work very similar to red light cameras that we have in Maryland. So if you don't come to a complete stop, if you blow through the stop sign, if you, slow a little as you, as you make a turn, it will, uh, capture the rear of your license plate and then, uh, ticket will be issued. Uh, the pilot program that they brought up to me, was from a company that deals with the, uh, DC government. Uh, I believe they're out of Florida, and we would be the first in Maryland to provide information to our state. Uh, if, uh, I don't have the details of, of if it would cost us anything, uh, but I just wanted to bring it to Mayor and Council, just to see if there would be an interest, uh, and, possibly the way it may work is that it may issue just warnings, it may not issue anything, it may just do, uh, analysis of how many are triggered by those cameras. So that's what I have for us for this evening.
Thank you so much. So I'm gonna go with Jared first. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, no, uh, th- thank you, Chief. And again, uh, just for folks on the call, um, we, you know, I, I hear the, the request for stop sign cameras a lot, and, we, we, we pushed really hard for this, uh, council and, uh, and Mount Rainier's, uh, uh, legislative consultant to try to get this passed, and there's a lot of forces that are pushing back on it. So, um, you know, I, I, I think, you know, while we're gonna push again next year, uh, Chief, I really like the idea of what you've brought forth here, um, to A, get, collect data in our community without actually having to get the camera, uh, you, you, you get a, um, ticket citing, uh, something to issue citations in, and B, not having to wait for, uh, the legislation change, uh, legislation to change, which it may or may not next year. Uh, but C, also for us, you know, to be able to kind of demonstrate, through this, through the data collection, through a pilot, even if it's just, you know, I mean, we're not issuing warnings, but we're collecting data, we're able to demonstrate how important this is for communities, like ours, because I think a lot of folks, when they think of stop sign cameras, they're thinking of like, you know, suburban arterials and, and, uh, you know, suburban cul-de-sacs, and the way people, folks interact with, uh, stop signs in those communities is often a lot different than an older streetcar suburb with ours, like a grid. Because what people do is they cut through, and the blocks are short, and they, people are not, is, and I'm sure everyone knows, including every, you know, all of us on council, because we're all in the same, uh, same grid, that folks just blow through this, you know, slow, slow roll, don't stop at the stop sign, um, because they don't wanna wait, the, and the blocks are shorter than they're used to, and there's stops everywhere, and we, you know, but we can't demonstrate how, much more impactful and challenging it is in a community like ours than in probably, uh, many, many other, uh, locations across Maryland, uh, where it might be more suburban, the stop sign and the speed issues are different, because, communities are more contained and cul-de-sacs and winding roads and not on a street grid. So, I, I'd be a huge fan of, um, you know, try, we, I mean, we need to figure the approach forward. Is it gonna cost, is it gonna not? Um, but I would be a huge fan of us kind of taking the leader, leadership role in this and also collecting data. Um, I, I know when you guys have, uh, s- stopped and, um, when you've done, uh, you know, pad officers and just kind of, rail plates, it's, you know, it, it is a pretty bad, it, it can be a pretty bad issue. Um, and, you know, but having more and continuous data on exactly, you know, where it is and, how frequent and how pervasive would be incredibly helpful, not just for here, but for policymakers that we want to, uh, uh, change the, uh, legislation rules around this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, Luke?
No, I would love, sorry, I was trying to figure my way out mute. Um, I would love for us to get speed cameras, stop sign cameras in the city, so any way we can, help move to get us there. I'm in supportive, so just really appreciate the efforts here, um, in bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Uh, Valerie, Danielle?
Um, yeah, thank you. I mean, if there's, uh, so we don't know how much it would cost, right? So these are all details to be worked out, but, um, you know, if there's resources and a pilot program that can help push the needle on this and, um, you know, take action where we desperately need it, um, I think that's a good thing. Um, so thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Um, yes, I, I absolutely love the idea. I'm with Luke. If we can get speed cameras and stop sign cameras and, all the things to help try to curtail speeding and cut-throughs and, rolling through stop signs, I'm all for collecting data, um, to help, you know, solidify the argument for these to the state, I think is extremely important. And I'm actually very, very excited that we may have the opportunity to be the first one in the state, to, uh, to pilot that. So that, that's extremely exciting, and I'm looking forward to seeing it go forward. As far as costs, I'm sure, um, that there's grants out there we might be able to use, to find, to use, uh, to, uh, do this when the time comes. And, um, um, I know there's a lot of people who are having trouble with their stop signs and people rolling through, and, I just wanna say that for some people who don't want them, i- if we do nothing, that's the same as giving people permission to continue to do what they're doing. So Chief, thank you very much for this.
Sure, well.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief. So the other thing I want to point out, that sometimes you might not see the officer on it, but they do have strips they put on the ground, that reads like how fast people go and stuff like that, so it's not like they don't do nothing. Sometimes you might not see them, but they are doing stuff. Uh, because the purpose is not to be in front of people where you see this, uh, cop car and then people start slowing down a mile away. Right? That defeats the purpose of how they act when the officers are not around. You know, but I would say that for me, the pilot program, it, it potentially could done so cheap. I'll narrow this down. I do have comments in the chat of people that have been waiting here. Valerie's is number nine, right? Um, that if we could find what the cost would look like and what it will tell, definitely to provide that information for us. Uh, we definitely appreciate it, so we could make better decisions. But I will tell you guys, I spent a lot of time in Annapolis, um, lobbying for, um, in support of various things that I think that include, that included, and, you'll be surprised, some of the bills that came forward, including like lowering our school zone, from point five to, uh, point one, which means that, uh, cameras weren't even gonna be allowed, uh, beyond point one, because the understanding was like, okay, well, kids walk to their schools, like, within the same block, and here it is, right? No conscious belief of like, kids are crossing several streets to get to this, like, suburb, you know, to our schools. So it was a big battle. We lost the one that had it to do with, um, with the speed cameras such as this one's, right, the stop signs. But we were able to win to keep our school zone at point five mile radius, where the last was to put, um, uh, what's it called? Speed cameras, right? So we, we won one, we lost one, but, I will tell you this, that, um, from everybody I've been talking to, they have every, um, they really wanna bring this one back up again. But if you don't have data, their, their lobbies are very strong, and without data makes us, you know, it's, it's a different competition. So it's about, about not just going to Annapolis and talk about it, but show data, and numbers that will definitely help not just our firm, but also like organizations that we lo- will belong to, right? Including MML, right, including PGCA that, you know, they're, they're out there also, heavily lobbying us along, alongside with us, right? So that is important. So I will say, uh, Chief, we'll hear the community, but I think that for next steps, it's not very much for an agreement for you to find information when it comes to, the cost implementation and how could we go about to having this program, in order to us to make best decisions and, and reality of, of what, um, what kind of data we're trying to, um, to gather, all right? So I will open it up to the public. Um, I will give the floor to Valerie Solinsky, because she, um, she asked for it like since earlier. So 4100 block of 31st Street, uh, Valerie Solinsky, uh, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Are you sure? Because Elise, Elise is above me in the queue.
The only reason why I said it is because you told me about two different subjects ago, that you were here for that specific item.
Okay, well, I mean, if Elise doesn't mind, sure, I'll go. Um,
You should have.
Yes, I, I live on the four, in the 4100 block of 31st Street, which, um, has the unique area of being, my block both Ward One and Ward Two, depending which side you live on. Um, and by the way, I think it is crazy to say, no, you can't use stop sign cameras because there's no data on it. Oh, but we won't let you put stop sign cameras on to gather data on it to be able to use the stop. That's, that's a catch 22, and that, that's entirely unfair. Um, I have been hit twice and had at least, I have a, a dozen close calls at 31st and Taylor, where people run the stops. They also run the stops at 31st and Shepherd. Um, I've seen some police pull over, um, cars that have run the stop sign, but at, at 31st and Taylor, but, you know, they can't sit there. And also, it's the big hill. And so people are constantly zooming up, zooming down, way in excess of, of the speed limits. Um, and, you know, so, so desperately this block needs some, something going on. I mean, we can't wait. We can't wait for the, the study that was done to be put into effect. You know, we did everything right, on our block. We, we played by the rules. We did a petition, it got lost. We did another petition. And, and now we're being told to wait, and, and it seems patently unfair when the rest of the city that has done this, has gotten speed calming, traffic calming measures. I don't care if they're bumps or humps, we have to try different things at this point. Whatever, just something to, to both let people know that, that they're being heard and that, the city cares about the people on this block. We're not just a dumping ground for the spillover from the other, blocks that now have speed humps and, and play, and, and things slowing them down. I'm, I'm all in favor of, of prettying it up to make, you know, bump outs and, and things like that as well. But I think we do need some sort of enforcement, especially as we wait for, that kind of reconfiguration to force drivers and cars to, slow down. I don't need to, the, when, when I've been hit, I was hit walking across the street, jogging across the street. I was not in a vehicle. It was just me, and I'm not a small person. So, I mean, we are right by the food forest. Imagine some, you know, I, I, the other day, a six-year-old on her bicycle. You know, I stopped, because that's what you do. But if somebody hadn't, I mean, it, it just, it just, you know, I mean, people keep asking it, and it's become a cliche, but, seriously, does somebody have to end up in the hospital or worse before, you know, before things start to happen? So anyway, that's, there's my event. I'm out. Thank you for letting me speak.
Are you sure? I almost flew number nine down, Valerie, so you can hang on more time with us, you know?
I wanna hear, I wanna hear what everyone else has to say.
All right, perfect. Uh, at least more 4100 block of 29th Street. You'd like to make a comment, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, can you hear me? Um, I am also, uh, I'm on the corner of 29th and Taylor, and I wanna just sort of reiterate what Valerie has, has, uh, pointed out. Uh, cars routinely just blow through our stop sign. I'm on the corner, so I see it day in and day out. It happens, mostly in the evening and then also in the morning when people are on their way. Uh, but I too have, um, narrowly missed getting hit by a car that, um, ran a stop sign. And we also have kids on bicycles now. There's, there's a number of little kids in our block, the 4100 block. So I, I, I'm all in favor of the stop sign, uh, camera pilot program, but I also want to see what else we can do before then. Uh, because I, I mean, you know, that's gonna take a while to get up and running, and, you know, by not doing anything, we're just giving people license to keep, keep doing it, and, and it's repeat offenders. I mean, I could sit on my front porch with my phone video and just, you know, uh, have, have videos running of, of car after car that goes through. And 29th, because it is basically coming from off of Eastern, you know, we're a cut-through. So, um, it, it's really a huge problem, and I just wanna see, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, whatever will happen, you know, whatever will work, but, uh, I wanna, you know, just voice my desire to have something done. Um, you know, and let's, let's try something, because if we do nothing, we're, we're just giving these, you know, uh, people, you know, license to keep doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Jack next. Jack, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to doubly reiterate, sorry, I'm at, uh, 3800 31st Street. Uh, doubly reiterate, um, what everyone said, which is that, uh, I walk my dogs there almost every day, and, that particular area around the food forest and Taylor and 29th can get very dangerous. Um, and, you know, I'm not sure if this is pessimism or optimism, but just having been a longtime DC resident and having seen, many of the stories of people ignoring fines up to tens of thousands of dollars because of lack of reciprocity, just wondering whether, you know, the sort of more unavoidable traffic calming measures, um, of just bumps and, and humps, um, is a better option. But that having been said, you know, I still see these problems on Bunker Hill with those same, um, more passive measures. And so a pilot program seems like, a very good and practical and reasonable idea, that I'm glad you all are so clearly working hard to, uh, do. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to back up what the two previous speakers said.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So I will tell you guys that aside from that, we're also, um, looking into reducing the speed for the city. Um, so that should help. But right now, our city manager's working with our, city attorney, I believe, Chief as well, to, um, to discuss what language will be used, if any. Um, I also talked to city manager and our director. Uh, they're also looking at what the cost will be associated to us, change all the signs if we decide to move forward with, um, the speed reduction. So that way, we as a council know like, what resolution we need to pass. One, and two, what'll be the cost of that, we're able to mobilize, uh, funding to make sure this takes place, because, um, and how much time will, will realistically take our team of, sometimes we tend to forget, there's only this many people in our public work staff. Only five people, and the time that they sometimes have to do, other stuff for the city, aside from the thousand things they do, are two days of the week, and that's without counting when they're picking up, um, you know, the, you know, the, either, not recycling, not taxi, other stuff, seasonal stuff, uh, the painting, the curves and everything else that goes on yearly. So I see, sometimes we assume that our team is gigantic, but it's only five people. All right, so, in doing that, we are gonna be working, they are gonna be working on providing, working with, um, I'm with the city attorney to figure out what the legislation is to reduce the speed around the, around the city, and what the cost will be for the signs. Uh, I know they're counting how many signs there are. I was wondering why I got green on it. You see this tiny little thing? It's getting my hands all full of green. Um, Um, you know, it's all over my face. Um, so work is going along with it. The other thing is like that we have also mentioned, um, seven hundred thousand dollar was put aside for various measures when it comes to peoples like speed tables, et cetera, in order to address uh the various items that are going all over the city. And we are very much working hard. So some of us, you see us with uh with extra work added to it. Uh, Luke and Jared um help along with the city manager, the whole entire, you know, basically directors to work on the S S for all study along with tool design. I know me and Jared had taken the lead on when it comes to the letters. Bill is working with city manager on the application. And everybody in our department is working out to try to get those um with those uh six hundred thousand dollars out of the seven hundred because a hundred thousand from Marpa. Every effort made to make sure that those twenty thousand, those seven, six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars are used part of the twenty percent match that we need for the money to be able to address the various things that we need. Um, so right now, every efforts we make and also want you guys to realize that it's not the other other blocks have skipped the trial. The studies, the study for to the site got done in twenty sixteen, Kamali, right? Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and then it got in, it got put into into um into effect when me and Luke came in in twenty seventeen, right? So every year, we have put quite a bit of money to try to make this happen. So some of them that got in those, they were done in the least priority of like once the study was done. And we ran into the same issue, like people are not coming in for four or five bombs, right? A speed like comes, right? They they were, they needed to come in for a big amount. And the last time we did was the count of twenty five. So want to make sure that we we get it done, right? So please know that every single person here, every single person, whether it's staff, whether it's council, whether it's myself as well, is working hard, either lobbying for better measurements to reduce and like work on speed, safety or funding to make sure this happen. Um, and everything else that goes in between, but nobody's standing around thinking um it's going to solve on its own. So it's it's a lot of extra effort to make this happen, but we're making sure we go through it. Um, the speed cameras is true difficult problem, headlights, okay? So I see a lot of comments. If you already spoke on it, that was your that that was your um your time to speak. If you have not spoken, if you choose to speak, you're welcome to speak. Uh, Luke, this will start the second round. Well, you don't need to, but go ahead, Luke.
Okay, yeah, I just want to kind of reply to everyone here. Um, I just really appreciate everyone's comments. Um, this is, I just want to kind of bring people backwards a little bit. This is a a big issue. I know for me personally, um, ran on this in twenty, uh, what was it? Twenty twenty one was the election on just transforming our cities, our streets um into something that is more like what you would see in a Scandinavian city or maybe in Tacoma Park.
So Luke, I'm so sorry. Now, uh, the clerk just sent a notice the time is up. Can we go ahead and put even if it's five minutes, you could finish your thought?
Sure.
Can you second that?
Motion, yeah, second.
All right, discussion, absentia attention here. Now, go ahead, Luca, I apologize, but she's been like flashing my screen. Go ahead.
And so, you know, you some of this stuff takes time, unfortunately. We we put money in the budget to do a a study, a holistic study. Um, we had to go out to bid, had to do it competitively. We had to bring tool design on board. They came on board last summer, um, where they do sort of introductory meetings with staff, our city manager. Um, and then we start rolling and we started rolling with lots of community meetings. And the feedback that everyone is given here today is feedback we have heard that we experience. I live on Taylor Street. I have two kids who we play in the street. We play at the food forest, um, very dangerous. My wife signed the petition for thirty first street. Um, and, you know, we have, we we as speaking as a citizen, I want speed humps right here and traffic calming right here. Um, what we what what we wanted to do with the holistic study is to make sure that we weren't, wouldn't do something that would spill traffic onto another street like what happened with thirty first street. Um, but going back to August, the fall, comments from everyone around the city, whether you're on upshore, same comments, um, whether you're on the south side, Perry Street, Newton Street, same comments. I'm nervous, people are speeding. I've got kids. When's it going to take an accident for us to do something? Same comments everywhere in this city. Um, and the the tool design went through that community feedback session over the fall and winter. We put more money into the project. We we altered the contract with tool design so they could give us a better plan that we could go after a specific type of federal funding that we would be most likely to get to implement a lot of this stuff. Um, and that's where we are now. We have a vision zero action plan. Um, thirty first street is a priority project. Um, but it doesn't mean that if you're not a priority project, we won't have fixes for twenty ninth and Taylor or everywhere else. Um, they are giving us a toolbox of fixes for all those other intersections in addition to lowering speeds, in addition to um right hand turn only on red, in addition to a whole host of other things um that will be a part of this that we will be doing. Um, and so the idea now is in our first year, as we look to prioritize things, as Selena said, we will have seven hundred thousand dollars. So even if we don't get federal funding this summer, um, we will have be able to do things like the thirty first street. We will have to do things thirty first street. Um, just want to make sure that that's happening, that is like not not happening. Um, I understand the frustration with how long this has taken, but this is just sort of what has had to happen unfor- unfortunately. Um, and we hope to have federal funding to do more than just thirty first street, to do all the other priority projects. We hope to have money to do projects throughout town. Um, and even if they don't get it done this year, they'll get it done the next year and the year after and year after. But there is a shared um sort of interest here in getting all of this done at as many locations um as we can. Um, and so um speaking to who got speed humps like in the in the long term past, I don't, you you know, that was part of the tool design study that was done a while ago. Um, and there was funding there for that, and that got up and we had to do a new one. Um, so but that's just where we are, but we are getting there. Um, and I am, I I'm sure everyone will be happy with once we actually get these things implemented into the ground. Um, and I know asking for patience from people is frustrated is not fruitful. Um, but I would just ask for patience and I just appreciate everyone continuing to bring these concerns. Um, and 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 we will get this done. Um, and it'll just take a little bit of time here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the background information, Luke. I think that it's good to remember where we're at because I think that, you know, and I mentioned it before, for some of the new residents, right? This is the reality, what they see now, but it's been quite a few years working very hard and creating a plan and and putting it to work, right? Um, when we started this, you know, people are like, it's never going to happen. And we made it happen, but that that plan ran out. We we managed to do a couple of things ahead of time because we put quite a bit of money to take care of it, right? And also work with grants and everything else to like expedite the program. And that's part of the thing that we also want to make sure we do. Chief, I do see your hand up, so I want to make sure that I I let you speak. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, clearly, we've heard you loud and clear. Our enforcement efforts are going to have to pick up uh thirty first street, Taylor, thirty first and Shepherd, twenty ninth and Taylor. Uh, I've run a few ideas past our city manager as well. Um, I'm looking at sooner than later, uh, devising a traffic division. Uh, just like we have officers, as you know, as a part of our community policing initiatives, we have them walking in our community hours on each shift. I want them enforcing in our community on these targeted areas. Uh, we have to set a tone in our city where we change the behavior of drivers. And we can't afford to have anybody hit. Uh, we can't afford this. Uh, my job is to keep this city safe with with every uh bit of uh resources that we can muster, grant money, overtime money that we're we we have coming in. Uh, part of that can be curtailed to having these enforcement issues happen. Um, I don't want to hear that you don't see our officers enforcing. I can make that change and I'm committed to making that change uh as early as next week. So um let's uh let's start to see a change in our city.
Thank you so much, Chief. So with that, um, I will tell you, there is a comment on the chat regarding can we have a officer basically sitting there to catch it as 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 a speed trap? Um, we don't do that because we could get ourselves in serious trouble, especially if it's a speed trap. But officers will be out there like Chief mentioned, how do you call it, um, enforcing? So this is, um, I don't want to say uh put people on notice, right? But like I mentioned before, when we've had done studies and those license plate read at Marania residence, you know, you guys can't, you know, um, I need to make sure you guys are aware that enforcement will go up. And they do write, there's actually the chief uh puts reports out of how many citations and warning have been given out. Uh, so that report is usually available and um Mr. Kamali, is this, I know it's in the city webpage, you know specifically where it is? It's under PD report, so where's it under?
It should be under the PD and uh they can have access to it. And if there is any trouble, they can, you know, email us, either me or chief or communication. You know, person, we can, we can make sure that they do have access to it.
Yeah, they can find on the quarterly reports under the police department.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So that information is also there so that way people are aware that I don't want you guys to like leave out of here thinking that no citations and no tickets and no warnings have been given because they are giving, but they definitely could like hype it up a bit more. If that's what we're hearing, that this is something that is being asked to do, then um Chief said like, you know, they're going to work on that. But I will say this to my beloved residents of City of Marania. I don't want to hear a thousand complaints about being cited for speeding in the city of Marania. If you're speeding, you are part of the problem. So I don't care how many temporary permanent speed bumps we put around the city. If you're speeding here, like, you know, you become part of the problem. And no matter if I put like eighty speed bumps in one street, you if you're still speeding, right? You are going to mess your car, but you become part of the problem. So that's not going to be taken away by speed bumps. All right? So moving on to the next item.
Mayor, I had my hand up. Luke started a second round of questioning and I just.
I think it was, okay, Danielle, I'm going to give you have one minute. But I would say that to use like he was doing more information than anything, but go ahead.
Uh, well, mine's for information too. I mean, this is the one thing that where where Luke and I will bat heads. And that's the fact that I do strongly advocate for the speed bumps, for temporary speed bumps. I have recently submitted quotes to um the city manager and Rosio um for uh twenty speed bumps for less than five thousand dollars that can go up temporarily and be pulled up in uh whenever the the toolbox things are implemented um and for snow and things like that. So I am on the side of the residents when they are screaming for temporary speed bumps. Um, so I didn't need a whole and 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 in the quarterly, the third quarter uh budget line that we just saw tonight, um, we've barely used just basically a little over half of the annual budget set for traffic calming devices. According to this, there's forty nine thousand seven hundred forty three dollars left and uh twenty speed bumps, uh temporary speed bumps that are ten feet long recycled heavy plastic with uh lifetime guarantee are less than five thousand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And that's just for the purchase, not for putting them in the ground and to want to make sure that it's clear. The other thing is like to make it very clear so it's not walked out of here with anybody assuming that nobody here cares about that. I think I have not heard one person on staff or in council saying that they don't care about the safety of the residents. And if a temporary option is something that could work out, that's something that could work out. But at this point, the reason why it was lower in the budget was because we decided to put a hold until we got the study going on to make sure we did not put something permanent or temporarily that could potentially be affected later. So please, I don't want everybody to walk out here thinking that we're not quote unquote on the side of the residents because we definitely are on the side of the residents. So Kamali, um, I see your hand up and I'll go ahead and give you the floor.
I just want to, I just want to respond to to Daniel Carter, that line item that you see that is also, we have that one eighty five thousand dollars plus. We have uh that's, I'm sorry, that's about seventy thousand dollars. And we have not received the invoice from Tool Design. The mayor and council decided to allocate that money for the study in F Y twenty three. So that money will be used by end by June the thirtieth. I've asked them to send me the invoice and Tool Design has not, you know, provided all the invoices. So by the time that we provide the fourth quarter, you see the money has been exhausted. The line item has been exhausted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. All right, so um Chief, thank you so much for putting this information forward. Um, please provide whatever this information is to figure out how we could carry this pilot program. Kamali, um, I know I discussed it with you and um and obviously was discussed as an open meeting when it comes to like, um, what else we need to make sure if the council wants to move forward to reducing the speed, how much time we will need to make that happen, right? And I just put the resolution, but science costs and everything else that goes along with it. Either you guys, Rosio, chief or Kamali, you guys have a question, please reach out. But I think you guys have plenty of work do during the summer. And um, and so the community, we're pushing very hard to make sure that um we address this um this issues and um as fast as as we can, but as reliable a as we can. So sometimes it's not a matter of just throwing money out, it's a matter of throwing of putting it in the in the right place in order to make sure that we're able to advance the mission that is safe streets. All right? Thank you guys so much. Thank you, uh, the whole team. Thank you, Chief, as well, Rosio, Kamali for this. All right, uh, moving on to the next one. Um, this one is a discussion and resolution agreement between Gateway C D C and the City of Marania, the town of Brentwood and North Brentwood for the funding. So give you guys a quick background. We did, we had talked about putting money aside from the budget, a hundred thousand dollars to be divided in two checks, at least from fifty thousand, fifty thousand to help Gateway. The three mayors and Elise, well, and the call was two other representatives, how do you call it, from Gateway, our liaison, in this case Valerie, uh, the liaison for and vice president of Gateway C D C Board, Marcus Monroe. And um the mayor of North Brentwood, Wesley Communication, where Evans with this, who is the representative for um Gateway uh Board, uh, got together to uh create and work on a resolution, right? Um, in order, how do you call it, to have an agreement, at least for this next year, when it comes to the funding, some of the things that we need as well as some of the things that we are required. So we have met, Valerie, has it been three times or two times?
Uh, three, two, two and a half.
All right, two. And uh they were able, like, um, our representatives of the board were able to provide various information that the various towns and cities needed. Uh, Kamali, I'm going to be forwarding you out that information because you are the one that's going to be receiving reports and everything else that goes along with it. Um, so but it was important for us to come to a consensus because the reality is like uh one mu- one pot of money wasn't going to be enough for the kind of work that needs to happen. But we wanted to make sure we work cohesively with the other two municipalities, in this case Brentwood, North Brentwood, to come out with a resolution of understanding of things that we were asking Gateway to provide to us in order to make sure that we are um that we are following through because this is taxpayers' dollars. Um, um, in order to make sure that there's some accountability for the money that is put out. So that resolution is very much what you saw the other document was written. We want to support them and we're collectively working with Brentwood, North Brentwood, Gateway C D C to support our artists. All right? Move it up, Melissa. It talks about Gateway was funded twenty five years ago in nineteen ninety seven. Go on, go on, go on. The success that they've had when it comes to the media app, um, media arts lab, the the, I said, the lab magazine, the prime management, the current uh studio uh designer ownership program uh from the state of Maryland. Keep going. And basically, let's get moving right now that everything is is hot and ready to go, right? Um, that's it. And it says that, you know, we are supporting the grow, build and thrive, be available to leverage tax dollars for the two municipalities uh that include Marania, Brentwood, North Brentwood, and fund other means of funding mechanism. All right? And basically, let it be resolved.
Did we lose mayor?
Yeah, I thought I froze. I thought I froze, okay.
Okay. Okay, so this is just a a reading. Um, I'll go around the room to see if there's comment. I'll start in Ward one. Danielle, do you have any comments on this resolution?
I haven't had a chance to read it. Um, I I just looked at the agenda packet and it's not in there, so I haven't had a chance to read it. I don't know what's in it. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Um, Valerie, I'll go to you. Do you have any comments?
No.
No, um, this is, we've already um put the funding into our budget for this fiscal year. Um, so this is just a um formal action that um both are all three towns are putting in. So the city of Mountaineers passing this resolution, Brentwood and North Brentwood, all collectively so that we can say that we intend to support the Gateway CDC as they uh grow, build, and hopefully further thrive for the collective communities. Um, and that helps, that will help with Mountaineers um further economic development and other opportunities for for connective um work through the corridor and in Maranier.
Okay. Is there any timeframe that we need to act on with respect to this resolution? Or is it okay to wait until September on this?
Um, so ideally, it's passed before that, but um um, I don't know if mayor was gonna talk about doing that tonight or another time. Um, and she's just coming back in now, so she might.
Hey, you guys, my apology. Uh, soon threw me off. And it took me a while to get back in, but I'm back. I'm back. So basically, um, let it be resolved that this is the expectations we're having from uh Gateway CDC as we releasing funds, right? Which includes quarterly reports, you know, that they are in good standing with uh the cities and the state. That they remain a five or three organization, that uh they give us audit yearly, that uh once a year in the December timeline, uh they come into mayor and council to report um what they've been up to the success and make sure that um we have information and consistency um from both of us and it comes to branding, marketing from the events. And that the city has input in and what events they're gonna be working in collaboration with us. More or less, that's what the resolution is. And that's more or less the agreement between the two towns and the city. As we are gearing uh to provide our first um distribution of the monies in July. Alright. Any, any questions? It's very straight, it's very straightforward and we already agreed to give them the money. This is basically what is it that we need from them as um the year goes on to report back to us.
Um, mayor, mayor, um, Luke had a question about timing, um, when we would be um adopting this.
Yes.
Are we, are we trying to?
Yeah.
So if we all have consensus today, we'll go ahead and pass it and then um we go ahead and pass it. We could have, I was thinking of just one small meeting to address this one item and nothing else. Uh, doesn't necessarily mean it could be passed today if you guys choose to, but it's not a legislation meeting. So we will have to pass it next week in a very, very small one item and nothing else meeting. Alright, because there's no money allocated to us, just more like and understanding that we're following through and we definitely wanna make sure that um we vote on this before the July uh that, before the July day. So that way they could get their money as soon as possible. Okay? And Luke, if you're saying, I feel like I have to stand with one leg up and with bunny ears in order for this to work right now. Cause you guys all froze. I don't know if you guys could hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good. Okay, so if we're in agreement, um, we'll make a one item meeting and that's it. And we'll pass it through and that way they could have their um money in July. Good. Any questions?
I do have one thing. Um, I just, I just wanna get a copy of it so I can read it. So I know what I'm voting for. That's all.
There's no voting tonight, but you'll get it. How do you call it? Melissa will send it tomorrow. Okay?
That's what I meant. Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Anything else? We're good? Alright. Thank you and thank you Valerie as well and Marcus, uh both mayor Rosio, Tramia Lopez and mayor Robinson as well for working um through all of this and the whole entire Gateway team um for for their support as we're carrying through um and making sure we're supporting uh the artists and um and collaborate cohesively. Alright, thank you guys. Okay, moving on. Sorry, guys, I'm like cooking up here. Uh, moving on to the next item, presentation, discussion and council meeting rotations. Uh, let me see, cause we mentioned a spread, recitation, uh mayor and council to consider changing the meeting schedule of legislative year with a work session instead of legislation meeting. Alright Danielle, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. Um, Melissa, do you have the, okay, thank you. I was gonna say you could share, but great. Um, okay. While I was preparing my presentations for the African American History Line Item Committee, it struck me that if I introduce them tonight, there would be a minimum of seventy six uh days before it would be able to be discussed again. I felt this was quite a long time for information to go without action of any kind. So I decided to hold off doing the presentations until we come back from summer break. I just felt that the topic is too important to just let it sit around for summer. Now, during my uh recent Open Meetings Act class, I remembered hearing or reading something about a minimum of six days before action can be taken on something and a maximum of sixty days. Now, I did not see anything about that in our city charter um and figured that was just something on a state level. Nonetheless, it made sense to me. So I thought if we ended one fiscal year with a legislative meeting and then started the next fiscal year off with a business meeting, then there would be no extended break between the introduction of new business and the next opportunity to discuss it. So um with that, I did some research into the city charter and the rules and um this is what I found. In uh, what does the city charter say? Uh, the city charter essentially said, the mayor and council shall meet regularly at such times as may be prescribed by its rules, but not less frequently than once a month, except in July and August if the mayor and council chooses to spend all meetings in those months. Um, this is the only thing it says about dictating when um meetings or how many meetings or what kind of meetings um that the council can have in the charter. Then what do uh the meeting rules say? I checked there as well. And in the rules and procedures, in article nine, section B, it states work sessions will be scheduled at a regular interval, usually the third Tuesday of each month. That is not a dent, but definite, uh def- definite, that is just a suggestive, a strongly suggestive, but not concrete, um solid suggestion. And then it also states that items of new business shall be discussed in work session prior to being introduced at a council meeting. Now, the rules are separate from the charter in that these were the ones that we read and voted on when Valerie and I were sworn in back in May. Why would we consider switching the end of the year meeting to be legislative versus starting it with legislative? It just makes sense to start the new fiscal year and season with a work session to introduce new business. From tonight until September fifth, our next regular meeting, there will be seventy six days. New business that is being introduced tonight will essentially go stale, that's my word, before it is discussed again in a council meeting unless we hold a special session in July or August to address it. Uh, does it really matter? Um, as each month rolls along, it can help the flow of regular meetings by starting the month with a work session. New month equals new business. The way the meeting schedule is laid out right now, we end the fiscal year with a work session where new business is introduced. And then seventy six days later, we start with a legislative session where hearing, second readings, voting, etcetera. That is a long time to go between discussions and voting. That's a lot of beach trips, pool days, family vacations, not thinking about council and meetings. Now, what about the other municipalities? Um, I did my research. I called all twenty seven municipalities in Prince George's County and got in touch with all of the five. Um, one was closed by the time I called and the other four, the people that were there that could answer my questions were either not in the office or won't be back in the office until this week. What I found was out of the twenty two that I contacted, seventeen of the municipalities in Prince George's County start with a work session first and end their year and month with legislative. The only two in Prince George's County that starts with legislative first is Mountaineer and Chevrolet. Uh, Greenbelt does work sessions as needed. Heitzville doesn't designate and C Pleasant does them all in one meeting. They start with legislative and then end with uh work session in one meeting and then start with legislative the next meeting. Now, I wanna make a note that Eagle Harbor, I spoke to the mayor in Eagle Harbor and he said just recently um they uh changed it from doing uh work session last legislative first and have found that the the um the smooth, the the role of the meetings and the the year goes a little bit better. Now, the timeline as we have it right now, tonight, we've had at least four presentations with new business being introduced. The next time we will have a regular meeting will be a legislative meeting seventy six days from now. And then ninety days from tonight, we will have our next business meeting. But my proposed timeline is that tonight, we had the four presentations and new business. You can go to the next slide. Um, and then September fifth, we have a work session to start the season, start the month. And then if we need to, we can go into a legislative session to do any voting that we need um in that meeting. Um, and then start September nineteenth, two weeks later on legislative, and then for the rest of the year, start each month on a work session and on legislative and then fit in budget meetings as needed. Wrapping up this season at the end of June next year with a legislative season, uh legislative meeting instead of introducing new business that will sit around all summer long. Now, it just makes sense. At least seventeen of the twenty seven municipalities in Prince George's County already agree that starting each new year a month with a work session and ending the year or month with a legislative session makes sense. Um, the mayor council rules and procedures state that the new business can only be introduced at a work session before being brought up at a regular meeting. Because of this, it just makes sense to start the new year month off with new business. If we start the new fiscal year council meeting schedule with a business meeting and vote is, and a vote is needed on issues we heard tonight, it is easy and fast to just go into a legislative meeting like we're gonna do at the end of this one to do a public hearing. But it is not common to go from a legislative meeting into a business meeting. Doing so will just extend the time of the meeting. You can go to the next one. Now, what would need to be done? Uh, we could uh in, and nothing needs to be done in the charter. There's absolutely nothing in the charter that dictates when with e- each meeting needs to be done, whether it needs to be first or second or anything. However, the rules do state that the word third and first can be changed. So we can change third to first, instead of usually the third to usually the first. We could delete the entire sentence after the comma or we can overlook it because the word usually is not concrete. It is just suggestive. Um, or a- and a simple resolution would be all that we would need if we needed to do anything. If we just go, well, we can leave it at usually the third because it doesn't dictate a definite. Give it a try for a little bit. If it does work out, then we can write up a resolution, do that if we need to. If not, we can go back to the way things are now. So, thank you very much for hearing me out. I'll take any questions. Jared.
Okay, uh Danielle, I lead the meeting.
Oh, no, I just saw his hands.
Um, either way, thank you so much. Um, so I call upon who's next. Thank you. Uh, Jared, I have you with one hand up and one hand down. So I'm not sure which one it is, if halfway you wants to go up or not. Go ahead.
No, I'm I'm sorry. I have that issue with my computer where like the microphone stops working in the middle. So um, on my phone still. Um, yeah, I'm um, thanks for bringing this, Danielle. I um I do uh at least on its face, um, this to me that makes some, makes some sense. Um, so I'm, I I do wanna say I'm interested to hear from some of my other uh colleagues. Um, so I think, I think the cadence switch does make sense. There may be something I'm not seeing here. Um, I did, I did wanna mention that uh, um, you know, we I I will say at least for the last two and Valerie can probably weigh in on this and Luke and Selena can, we're not we're not off in July and August. What we are is kinda having a bit of a bit of break and that gives staff some room. But I mean, we're y- you know, you should, you should you should expect to be thinking about council and working on council stuff um during that time period. I I certainly do and I know the rest of my colleagues that are, have been on council for a while do. So I just want, I just wanted to be clear this and for anyone watching, like recess is not a, we don't do any council related stuff. We always are, but it does put a a brief pause in the um in the uh cadence of a legislative and uh work session meetings. So um, I I think that's that's really my only uh major, major thought. I mean, it's a, it's a decent revision. I mean, we certainly don't have to move quickly on it. Um, but uh, yeah, interested to hear others' input.
Alright, thank you so much. Luke and Valerie.
Yeah, Danielle, I just appreciate, I do, it's clear a lot of work went into this, a lot of research went into it. Um, and yeah, unless I'm missing something, this seems like it makes a lot of sense. Um, so just appreciate the work you put into it and what what others may have to say, but thank you.
Alright, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds like reasonable, a reasonable proposal. Um, I will say that we, I think we, I think we've already voted on the calendar for next year. So I don't know if we have to bring it up like in September um again to discuss it, but um, but yeah, thank you for for looking at this and and bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Um, I think that uh to answer your question, yeah, we did vote it two weeks ago on the calendar and at this point, I believe the team has already moved forward with uh put it in the calendar, doing the logins and everything else that needs to be on to to go ahead and um and get it ready. The other thing to put information out, we need to also revisit to figure out what does this looks like when it comes to uh both our election calendar, but as well as our budget calendar, as our budget calendar is very much linked to what session it is where. I will tell you that even speaking to some of them, uh because it caught my attention, they said that they they, all these municipalities were in agreement, right? I actually had a meeting earlier today with quite a few of them, right? Um, and um, they, they, they were, I don't know if they were particulars, like, you know, support, I think it was more of like, you know, that's, that's just the way we have it and it's not here or there, right? But I will say to you, uh, to answer Valerie's question, yes, it was already passed uh two weeks ago. Um, and so in saying that, we will have to, it's not just a simple resolution. We will have to vote on the council rules to change that, but we also will have to like break the resolution when it comes to um the passing of the voting of the schedule of um of of the schedule, the calendar. So those are the two things that will have to happen because one shouldn't happen without the other. Because it's a consensus that we as council agree on to make sure we follow out through the rules and what the agreement has. So my other thing, like, you know, I will say that if this is even bother to consider, please make sure we figure out what it looks like for one, our election cycle year. I will look what it looks like when it comes to our scholarship uh cycle, cause we have a specific day where we are worth of funding and what it will look like. But also when it comes to our team cohesively, um, when it comes to the budget um approval, we do as much as we can to try to approve um the budget before the election, right? And we'll have to figure out what that exactly um that exactly looks like because I know they part of the reasons why they, we also do it that way because it gives them enough time when we pass something during the even this last meeting there, we had, what I realized in the last six years, we very much focus on presentations and work that's gonna take longer than two weeks for them to be able to produce information, for them to go out there and put the information forward. So I will say that neither us or the staff is resting. It just means that we don't have meaning, but also it means that like in example from earlier, right? If there's just a one item or two that we might need to pass through, we'll go ahead and do it. But at the same time, it also helps the staff to um to know what they're more or less gonna be addressing during the weekend, during the summer. Right? And heavily is gonna be our priorities um as well. So in saying that, thank you for putting this together. I think that at least for me, I will need more information to figure out how it will affect the other two, two, three schedules that we have on set. And also get feedback from the staff to figure out um when it comes to them how they see it play because I know they lay out their schedule for the year based it on that consistent that we have. And then even in the work that um they do it and that includes um you know, the conferences they attend to, you know, to make sure they're here with us and so on and so on and so on, right? So that's part of the things that um also go going to play on. The other thing is like the work session itself is something that uh we as a municipality also do. Um, according to like technically our rules, right? We are, you know, we we could just be doing legislative sessions, right? But we decide to do one work session, sometimes even two if need be, like right now it's ten twenty four. Right? So we decide to be like, look, this is too much. We might have to do another, another meeting to address that the rest of the meeting because the council rule says after two hours and a half, we need to um we need to check in to figure out whether we'll continue or keep or move it to another meeting. It gives us room to also do that. But so to me, it's like, you know, just like Jared had mentioned, like it does not if we need to be brought in, um, if the city manager says, you know, mayor council, I do need this to um can you guys please expedite to approve it? Usually the clerk, the city manager works with us to try to get some things that in front of us to get it voted. And then if something comes out in the summer where we need to address it from something that's here, they will go ahead and reach out to us. Um, and also we we make it happen. Alright, so I I think that that's where I'm at right now when it comes to um the schedule, but at this point, I will say that we've done two different. we've done two different votes when it comes to like um how we are agreeing to the schedule, so those two votes will have to undo, so it's not just one vote that we will have to um undo. So aside from the approval, the calendar that happened two weeks in May that you may reference, that we also voted to support the council rules that um that also address um, you know, what we're gonna be doing. All right. All right, Danielle. I'm gonna call upon you, Danielle, let's your hands up. And guys, this will also open up a second round. If you guys wanna add anything else, if not, it's fine. It is ten twenty-six. So I'm required to put a pause at ten thirty and ask you guys what you guys wanna do. Okay? All right, go on.
Um, I just wanna answer that um mayor, I did, I did look at the uh, the, the meeting schedule that we agreed upon, and it won't change that at all. The only thing it would change is the dates would stay the same. It would just be, would it be legislative or work session instead of, I mean, that that would be the only question, would it be work session or would it be legislative? As far as like things um in the election year, or um like with the uh, the awarding of the uh, of the scholarships, again, it 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 is up to us. We can add those into a meeting, like if we're having a work session, of course, we would be able to award the uh, the scholarships, but if we're doing legislative meeting, we can, we can go out of a legislative meeting to make those awards and then go back into um the legislative meeting. It's just a matter of a- a- aesthetics, I guess, essentially, and uh the flow of the meetings. And again, with my proposed timeline, um, again, with the the taking budget meetings into account, we would still schedule those accordingly. Um, it would just literally be the first meeting of the month would be work session, the last meeting would be legislative on a regular roll. And then we would make the adjustments. And and to uh answer Jared's uh, uh, his comment, um, I, the way I presented it, I didn't mean to say that we, I I thought I did say that in there that we wouldn't meet over the summer unless we decided to. This, this literally doesn't affect special called, special meetings. This only affects the regular rolls, like the two meetings a month that we have on a regular basis, which we do not have a regular work session or a regular legislative session in July or August unless we call a special one. So this only affects the regular September through June schedule. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And to address it, when I said like, you know, it will get changed, it's so far, it it does make a difference whether you decide to be absent for a work session or whether you decide to be absent for a voting session. It it does uh makes a difference on which order it goes. Um, because some people um for work reasons, they sometimes cannot make it to the work session, but they also, they will always wanna make sure they make it to a voting session. All right, so council, since it was the second round open, um, if you're good, give me thumbs up. If not, I'll give you the mic, whichever you, whatever you guys choose to. Uh Valerie, you're good?
Um, yeah, I mean, I just think if we're gonna look at this, I think it would make sense, since we've already voted on it, to try and do it for the next, like make this a thing for the next year potentially, but um I'm open to hearing from others as well.
Thank you, Valerie. Uh Luke?
Yeah, I'm um, I'm 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 supporter of this. Um, it doesn't matter to me on timing, though. I'm fine picking this back up in September. I don't need to like have another meeting about it. I think that could work just fine. Um, but I'm open either way.
Jared? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I did wanna echo Selena's point. Um, you know, I have probably one of the most aggressive work schedules of folks and you know, I've kind of organized it around uh legislative or work sessions uh when I've had to miss, but um uh, sorry, aggressive travel schedule, my work schedule. Um, but uh, yeah, I still, you know, I I I think the approach makes sense. I just wanna make sure we work through it, and also I I wanna kind of said about just making sure we get feedback staff. Um, you know, Danielle, I will certainly say for me, like, sometimes I think there's like, I make one small tweak, and then like it has these, sometimes these unintended uh unexpected effects, because there's all these other things that rely on timing. I just wanna make sure we get staff feedback on uh, you know, if we make a switch, what what does that mean? Um, because in this moment, I think, I was like, I can't think of that many things, but there might be some, so I just wanna make sure we go through that um first. So because at the end of the day, the staff is staff, Mr. Kamali and all the folks that come on these meetings and organize around, you know, work sessions at this time, let us ledge session at this time, and stay with us till eleven, eleven P M. at night, tonight it looks like. Um, you know, we uh, the burden is on them for, on the execution of all these pieces. So, uh, thanks.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, do we have anybody in the public? Um, I don't have nothing in my chat line. Does anybody, um, Luke, since you're vice mayor, Jared? Um, do you have anything on the chat for right now? Because since I went offline, I didn't see anything if there was any comment. It raises completely. We're good? All right. All right, can you put the agenda on? Okay. Uh, guys, it is ten thirty-one. Uh, by our rules, I need to ask you guys where you guys are at. We are, you know, we still need to do the mayor council priority discussion. I would like to take care of this because I'm um, I'm working a lot with the legislators right now, and even like, you know, for M M L, but also for like N L C and X and X and Y and Z, right? There's a lot of work that I have to do right now, and usually I I'll stick to the same priorities we have, right? But I would like to hear from you guys, where you guys are at. Specifically, when it comes to legislative ones, um and by legislative, I mean like, you know, going after, how do you call it, like S S four A, right? That happens to be one of the legislators, so that way Juan Kamali also tells the legislative team, because they've been holding on what is it that we want, and and I'll tell you this, even in my conversation with the legislators, right? They wanna know now, not in the summer, not in three weeks. They've been waiting on this to happen, and um, and I would like to get them out. So my appeal to you guys is like, hold on for a little longer. Um, and if we have to put anything from ARPA on hold um for next meeting, and the presenting of the minister easily, she's presenting, then we're not voting on them, they'll be up for vote um on the next meeting. Uh, but if you guys could hold on for a little longer, I will ask for you guys to hold on a little li- like even thirty more minutes or whatever time you guys need to get this done today. Uh, Jared, Luke, Valerie, Danielle, can you put thumbs up? Are we continuing? Are we putting a pause? All right. The Valerie, we're good. Okay. So I need to do that because the reality is like, um, it it has been a long meeting, you know? And this is just a work meeting. Uh, legislative will be even longer. All right, so moving on to um item number eleven, discussion and council, um, oh, sorry, discussion mayor council priorities. It's a twenty-minute discussion. We will have a discussion on our priorities. Please make a note whether it's a legislative priority or not, so that we are more or less don't ask the background information. We do this every year. We usually do it around September, but the reality is that we cannot wait till September because the decisions are being made now. And it makes my job a little bit easier if I, if I more or less know where you guys are at, as I'm advocating through the streets. And a couple of us, not just me, I'm not gonna say it's just me, because a couple of us are very actively um working um and talking to legislators at all levels to make sure this happen, uh but it definitely is good to hear. So let me know if it's a priority for the past few years. Pots Hall's funding has been a priority. So therefore, our team has worked heavily to make sure we drive funding to be able to take care of that. This year, we also picked up uh S S four A. That's something that we're currently working on, and it's also has become a priority, not just for us, but for the whole entire team. So I need to know where also you guys are on it, because the reality is that when they come to me and say like, do or die, this is what we could fund, right? I have to sometimes make a decision with a stop of a second, and usually I make it based on the recommendations you guys have given me to make move, make sure we move forward on on what is being put on on deck to be able to fund, save, or where we're at. And if you have something particular to the city that's not funding related, uh please um, please let me know as well. So we usually stick to three. And I know we have a thousand of them, but three is enough because we're trying to find consensus. So Luke, I'm gonna give you the floor if you wanna go into more detail or detail or whatever you want, because usually I'm a little disappointed. There's no whiteboard behind you. I'm just gonna officially say that. Usually the Luke draws a big whiteboard to do this, um and a couple of sharpies of papers around, so Luke, I guess we we have moved on from that virtually world, right? He might need a like a a paper and pen or something along those lines. All right, you have the floor. It's yours. Go on.
Um, I can, um, yeah, I could share my screen with a Word document. That would help us put that in there, and then or or staff can take notes. Um.
Put in the Word documents, especially if you could help us with that, it would be better.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, and again, this is just a really good exercise to see that we probably have a lot of 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 priorities that are similar, so please do not change your priority just because somebody else put it down. The purpose is to kinda see where we have similar things. Maybe we won't, but usually there's a lot of crossover here. Um, and so I could just go ahead and start listing mine. Um, my three priorities are for the year are delivering on the streets and sidewalk study. Like um those people on Thirty First Street were getting all that done this year. That's that's happening, and a lot of stuff is is happening there. Um, and I'm excited about that. The second thing is an economic development plan for Rhode Island Avenue. That's a big thing. I really, really wanna get done. Um, and the third thing is direction on Rogers and Spring Parks. So I really wanna get those two things done, and those are my three. Mayor, who would you like to go with?
Um, I will say to you, it's like, do you have any, I I love those priorities, Luke, but you did not follow instructions.
Sorry.
Can you also give me if there's any legislative priorities that you might have with funding? Is Pots Hall and S S for All um your two top priorities for funding?
Funding for streets and sidewalks, and then this is funding for strategic property purchases. There's property on Rhode Island Avenue that we want the city to fund.
So Pots Hall's no longer on your list of funding, right? That's what you're trying to say?
Um, it's not, I I think not my priority. You guys can have it. It's just your priorities. I think that's gonna get done. I'm 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 confident in that one.
We still need one more year of funding.
Yeah, we need to finish the project, please.
Yes, we will. I'm not concerned about that.
All right, because when they ask me, I'll be like, he wants money for parks and to buy property, just so you know. I don't hear complaints about it later. Pots Hall's no longer priority.
No, it's a priority. It's a priority for me, but it's it's, I had to pick three, and these are three.
No, but you don't, you're not, these are three for inside the city, but outside funding, like earmarks and stuff like that. To me, it's like the, a street and sidewalk study, that'd be S S for All, right? That's maybe the flip for a level. Is that what you're thinking of?
Okay, I can do Pots Hall to replace the the parks then.
Thank you. But the first one will be defined as what? S S for All? Is that what you're aiming at? Just for clarity?
Um, or if we can get more from the from the state, yeah, S S four A or more from the state. I can put S S four A.
So that we could start narrowing that narrowing them down, Luke?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, so um who wants to go next? Who's eager to go next? All right, Danielle, we'll go ahead, and then Jared. Go ahead.
Okay, so um, all of my priorities are in the city. So um, I'm going to, my my three priorities are revamping the newsletter, apartment council liaisons, and filling empty business spaces. But when it comes to federal funding, I wanna see, I mean, not federal, but state funding, I wanna see both S S four A and um the uh Pots Hall, because I I wanna see Pots Hall finished. Oh, my God, I wanna see that thing finished. So um, can can I put both of them as top priority for funding?
Yeah, you can have two.
Okay, so those, those are my, those are my top priority as far as funding from the um state. But my, my personal three are different.
Yeah.
But they're not gonna need money from the state. I'm looking for grants.
Right. It was your personal was newsletter. What else?
Uh apartment council liaisons and filling the empty business spaces um in the city.
Okay.
All right, Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I was um, oh, sorry. Okay, Luke, you got it. Um.
I'm good.
So uh, Pots Hall's the big one, because we, Mr. Kamali's right, we gotta, gotta finish that. Uh, and that is gonna require a lot of political oomph in terms of additional resources. Uh, and that's, yeah, we we can't leave that one. Hey, I like, other things can wait till later. We gotta keep the movement on this one. Um, delivering on streets and sidewalks, uh and that's both either winning S S four A this year or hopefully next year. Um, but it's also executing on it if we can't. If if we're unsuccessful winning this year, and that may be chasing some state funds as well. Uh, possibly maybe involves winning some state money to be able to use as match instead of using city funds, right? But again, I'd I'd rather not, you know, if we can get as much from the feds as possible, um because, you know, we can only go to the well so many times for for things from the state. We can't go to every department. Um, you know, I think about this when we go to M M L, we meet with the department heads. Uh, you know, we can't ask someone for something, we can't ask, you know, Mount Rainier wants fifteen things from ten different agencies. Like, we we gotta like, this is our thing, and this is our thing this year. Um, you know, because we're competing with so many different others, municipalities, counties, and others. Um, that was um, the last piece is um the e- economic development, and that's just, you know, I I I think we're um, you know, Luke, you've, I I think with um G W. coming in, um, you know, with with resources that we can tap into to help kinda, well, actually, you know, let me revamp, uh, let me, I don't know if you guys are gonna kill me if I put thirty-two hundred Rhode Island on here.
You could put it there. Nobody's gonna kill you.
I I'd rather put, I mean, because I feel like in general, we're in a good trajectory on thirty-two ru- on Rhode Island. In, you know, we have some vacancies more than we've had. We'll get them filled again, but um, you know, most of our businesses are doing pretty well on Rhode Island, um, you know? But there's some work to do still, but thirty-two hundred Rhode Island, um, you know, and or if there's any ability to move, you know, on the Larry, um, the Thrifty Lot, the, you know, that I know that's a big question mark. So um, yeah, that that, because that's, that's the big parcel, and I would, I would like us to be able to have make some movement there or push in some way, and I think that's gonna, I think that's a lot bigger than just the city, because I think that's gonna be need us leaning on the county, uh leaning on Winica, leaning on um the county economic development department. You know, because we're, we're not gonna be able to deliver the, we're not gonna be able to deliver a push on that alone. Um, we're gonna need a lot of support from county legislators and um county administration, so. Um, and and legislatively, I'll just, I wanna, sorry. The legislative piece, I I know we're talking about funding, but I really wanna try to, there was a lot of safe streets legislation and other safety legislation that like, we can't fix a lot of the things that we need to in the city, because state law prohibits it. And I really wanna, like, there were so many bills that did not get through this year, and I wanna make sure that's a big personal push. Um, you know, when I was up there with uh Bike Maryland, the bike pet advocacy group, and like virtually none of their stuff got through this year. Virtually none of WABAs, Washington, so Amer- um, Washington Area Bicycle Association, which pushes a lot of bike and pet stuff as well, virtually none of that's got through too. And that's where I really wanna see, um, you know, we can make a lot of these things happen if only the state will let us do it, and we need to like get the state to let us do it. So that's my big, my big personal push for next year.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Valerie. Go on.
Um, thank you, yeah. Um, so obviously, traffic um is a big one. I think Pots Hall is number one, because we have to finish the fight. Um, traffic, safety, S S four A is 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 uh important. Um, for me, traffic is, includes Eastern Avenue. I'd like to see that pushed through. I'm tired of waiting for D C. They need to move, um, and they need to move sooner than later to fix the road on their property. Um, so I'd like to push for that. Um, and then um, I think trail connections, um like you're saying, Jared, um, you know, I ca- I think I could say this, um, so I'd like, I'd like the Trolley Trail to come to Mount Rainier um, um, and come all the way down through and come down on Route One so that you can connect um people in place all the way up the Route One corridor, um, and into D C at some point, but so that that would be something that I'd like to push. Um, and then uh finally, it's economic revitalization of Rhode Island Avenue, but also um, I think the Varnum Street Business District needs to be connected, and so that's a personal thing that I'd like to to push um and work toward, and I um, I have some ideas on how to do it, and I have some people in the right places to make it happen, but um, those are things I'd like to to kind of work on. Um, but legislatively and and um, and uh funding wise, let's finish Pots Hall. Let's deliver on the streets and sidewalk study, and then let's um keep rocking and rolling. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that's something that we should have mentioned in the beginning was like, this is something that we try to aim at, something that you could do this year. There's some projects that we all have that's gonna take multi-years to get done, right? That is the reality of it, uh but if you start working towards it, it 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 could happen. But very much aim at that, right? Um, so I'll tell you what minds are and But very much aim at that, right? So I'll tell you what minds are and it's it's no big surprise of what they are because you guys know and this is what I've been pushing for and this is why it's been I practically live in Annapolis for months at a time at this point, like, you know, between my Rainier Annapolis, my morning in Annapolis and the afternoon in my Rainier. Except when it's like, you know, sign or die that I basically like live there as well. But Pots Hall happens to be one of them because we do need to finish the project. There's still one more million dollars. The other thing is like, you know, you guys have, you guys know how I feel about like removing money for investment, right? Unless we, if we need to, but it'll be down to the last second that needs to be removed to make sure that every single penny that we can get from that investment funding is there, right? So and I'll tell you guys, and you guys have heard it from our consultants as well, and I've heard it from who's who in economic development, because I do attend a lot of those wonderful conferences, right? It's gonna be a tight budget money next year. It's just gonna be tight, right? So we are gonna have to look at their different pots to try to get what we want, but it has to be cohesively pushed. Because if we have like, you know, if we're thinking of spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars from the city budget to do something, they're gonna turn around and be be with me like, and look, this is where you're spending your money on your budget. So therefore, like, you could definitely afford to do this. And those discussions are as real as they get. I want you guys to be fully aware that this is also what's happening. They're not out there not looking at where our budgets look like or potentially what we're spending our money. They also care to see what we're gonna be doing with our money. So that when they were, you know, their money, they also know that we're being putting it to good use, right? S S for all, and and that includes just like, you know, some of, you know, some of you guys have also mentioned, right? The sidewalk study, we have seven hundred thousand dollars, but make sure that we go back and Luke correctly, you know, Rook and Kamali were in and around when this was happening, right? We designated a percentage of the budget every year to make sure things happen. That's the reason why when people say like, all of this got done and the streets got bumping, blah, blah. That was done because we put, we make sure that yearly we had a target and in the fire plan, we had a target. It didn't just happen overnight. This is, it took four years to get us to where it's at and every year we were chipping at a big block because when they gave us the study, my goodness, I mean, the cost of the study of what it will take for all of this to happen in one year, there's no way we'll have been able to get it in one, two years along, right? So it took a lot of work of efforts, grants and everything else to make it happen in less than the five years, but that's the reality of it. So when we say let's be patient, that's exactly what we mean because we've seen it within the last five years, what that created for us in the city and what could potentially be created on it. And the team is always looking for grants. So it's it's for all. Look, are you like not paying attention to my whole speech? So S S for all, that'd be at the floor level for Pots Hall. I want us to see if we could either go for earmarks or state funding to figure out what our odds are. And Kamali will have a talk with legislative team to figure out where do they, where do they see better opportunity? Because the reality is, last year, we got seven hundred fifty thousand. But also remember Gateway got three hundred thousand out of that split between the three municipalities that belong to Gateway. Joe's got also money. The bridge unit got also money. So money that came into the city was more than more than a million dollars between what I just mentioned to you. Between three hundred thousand here, two hundred and fifty thousand there, split between three cities, blah, blah, and so on. So we had over a million dollars coming into the city. Either seven hundred fifty thousand to the city and the other ones to to our partners where it's Gateway C D C, whether it was Joe, whether it was the bridge unit. So many that came into the city. And for me, the third one, which is important, I think we cannot let it go anymore. I'm surprised Luke didn't mention it. Is, but it might be tied down and this is where me and you will like, we'll tie it on together, Luke. When it comes to like the branding for the city. You know, if we do not know what the vision of this city is, I don't care how many pretty documents you put in the document, but if staff alone cannot figure out which of the five logos to put in a shirt, we're in trouble. So if we cannot out define who we are as a city, we have been, we have more issues than anything else you could put together because they don't know who and what we represent, right? Think about the sign that we had earlier. We couldn't figure out what color. If we had branding of what our color looked like, I'll give you a perfect example. Chevrolet, that, what looked like Tiffany green and white? I could identify their logo anywhere they go and the word Chevrolet on it, right? But now they have everything that goes along with it that that has that. So when they have their mission, their vision, stuff like that, so that is the strategic plan that we need to put together. This will allow for us to have a short and long-term plan in order for us to be able to tackle the things as we go along. But I think branding is will be for me, the branding that fall under economic development will fall under everything you see right here. Because if we don't have that, if we go one more year without it, at least for me, we're doing a disservice to the city and I'm I'm tired of like having to explain to people not just that Mount Rainier, Mount Rainier versus Mount Rainier, the colors, the logos, I mean, it's a whole discussion on who we are. But it goes back to be able to defeat this Wacommo approach to what we want to see in the long and short-term plan. So at least for me, those will be my priorities and what I'll be what we're working on. But branding falls very much into the plan for economic development. It comes for, you know, where we advocate and so on and so on. And Jared, when it comes to the cameras and speed and sidewalks and stuff like that, that's something that definitely I I will advocate heavily when we're out there and our team is gonna be directed as well that that's something to heavily advocate for as well. To make sure we have the authority to be able to do the things we want to do because a lot of these things come in nice and paper and the residents keep asking why so that we don't do it. But the reality is like, a lot of times we are binded with, but what the restrictions are at state level that a municipality could do in this occasion. And Rule One happens to be one of those that is not even our street and we've done as much as we can as it is. All right. So Luke, can you do a run through of what looks like I like and then move on it, move on it? I didn't say street improvements in Rhode Island, but you could.
I was gonna say, I was, yeah. I was, I was trying to get at like the the concept of like it being a state highway administration. Anyways, okay.
Yeah, go on.
We've got, yeah.
Pots Hall, number one.
The big ones are. I mean, everybody's got Pots Hall. And everybody's got the streets and sidewalks. If we can get those two things done this year, that will have been a big, big success for the city. Not saying we can't do everything else that everyone's got here. We can, probably will touch on some of this. But if we just do these two things, huge benefit to residents and that's so cool to see these two things on everybody's list. So.
All right. So we have our marching orders, Kamali. As we heavily advocate through the year.
Oh, I appreciate that because these are the two main projects that, as Luke said, you know, resident will have, you know, will be happy to see the big improvement in the city and I'll be thankful if we could finish those projects in next year.
All right. The other thing is like you cannot talk about fixing downtown. If you have a building that's like, you know, halfway done, right? That was, that will definitely, I don't care what way you put it, it's just not gonna look good. Welcome to our downtown where there's like a pieces of Pots Hall still being fixed because we don't have the money to do it, right? Ain't working. All right. So, perfect. So there they are. Luke will circulate this beautiful document of the agreement. Sonic Kamali will work with our legislative team to like, you know, get through them so that way they know that's important. And obviously, when it comes to safe streets, any of those rules that are applied to safe streets legislative, we're definitely gonna be heavily supporting them when it comes to camera rendition, blah, 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 blah. We could, I could talk to them about that one, but that's also like something that we have identified as as very important. Okay. And to say to the community, we're also gonna be working with our wonderful partners, you know, the schools, you know, the P T Os when it comes to some legislation and also municipalities. We are members of the National Legal Cities, Prince George County Municipal Association, Maryland Municipal League, the Maryland Mayor's Association, Naleo as well. So all those, all those various organizations cohesively work. And we have partners, obviously, like Casa and and so on, that also work on various subject that are they're lobbying out there to make sure that they are addressed. So by saying that, it's like, we're not doing this alone. We join forces with other people that are keeping eye. We do have our team who fills in with the various information. All right. So moving on to item number thirteen, do we have anything for upper discussion or can we skip it and move it and we're good? Melissa says we need to discuss the yes, no, we are, sorry, Melissa, to disappoint you. You're right. Melissa's like, die, go away, kill ARPA. All right. So we're gonna skip ARPA. There's nothing to discuss. Last time around, we approved various funds and we send our team to be able to utilize them. In September, we could discuss if there's anything else that we proposed. In the meantime, our team is working on the various projects to to address different, different issues. So we still have time. The report is not due until next year. To be able to like finalize what this look like. By then, we should have some cost analysis to figure out where we need to potentially move some of that ARPA money, if any. All right. Item number fourteen. The city clerk has presented the following minutes. Ferry sixteen, twenty twenty-one work session, March, uh, March second, twenty twenty-one legislative meeting, March eleventh, special legislative meeting, March sixteen, public hearing, March twenty-seven, public hearing and budget work session, April twenty, public hearing and work session, April twenty-seven. The last ones were twenty-one, 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 public hearing, budget work session and work session and special legislative meeting. May sixteen, twenty twenty-three work session, May thirty, twenty twenty-three special work session, June six, twenty twenty-three legislative session council. Read through them. You have any questions? Let us know. Submit any of those items to Melissa. If you see anything that you flagged that needs to be changed, submit it to her, please, so that what she could make in the next legislative meeting. All those minutes are gonna go up for vote. Thank you, Melissa, your whole entire team, Gabby and Gabby as well, to make sure for all the work that you guys have been doing with past minutes and present minutes. Correct? Anything else, Melissa? We're good? So you guys know her, her email finder, she, she, you know, so. All right. So everyone, can we move on to number sixteen and number fifteen? Move it up, Melissa. And just one simple reminder, Independence Day is July fourth. The city offices will be closed. And National Night Out is August first from eight to five P M. At Bunker Hill Fire Department. You are all invited and those are events more or less for this summer. All right. So in saying that, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
So moved.
Is it probably, is it, thank you, Jared. It's probably moved and second discussion, objection, extension, hearing none. This meeting comes to an end.
Thank you, staff.
And we are gonna put one one item legislative meeting, just to approve the resolution and we're done, okay? As far as I'm concerned, we could do it next Tuesday if you guys want, you know, but one, one, look at me. One item.
We're gonna be Ocean City, man.
Let's do it. Yeah, let's, we could do it at M M L. We could.
At the beach. Because all we needed is to collect it and that's it. So let's figure it out because all of us are gonna, oh, this entire team is gonna be there, right? So we just have to have like a phone with all of us, like standing in front of our computer with all of us standing next to each other to say aye and pass it through. The only other item I'll take in that agenda is in case there's a heavy emergency where there's none or be the, for you guys to say approve the minutes. Those are your two items, if anything, so that way the team goes off like happily and merrily, but other than that, it's okay. All right. Have a good night. I'll see you guys in M M L. Drive safely.
Thank you, staff.
See you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Have fun. Bye, team. Have a good night. Thank you, committee members for being here. Take care.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Thank you.